All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to our Council Quarterly Strategic Session Meeting. Glad that we've got some good presentations today and we're going to hear from Ketch Des Moines and talk about Unsheltered Study and some ARPA recap and updates, Public Works, and a little Council Board update. We, this is the time when we think together and we work together and get educated together. So, Mr. Manager, I think we should get started.
Absolutely, Mayor and Council members. I'll go ahead and bring Greg Ford with our first presentation. Ketch Des Moines.
Morning, Mayor. Morning, Council. Morning, City Manager. Morning, City Staff. Grille of your moment here today. Actually, we're here with some really good news today. You know, we've been before you the last couple of years, down and out, and things are picking back up. And I even, this morning, I had a chuckle driving in because traffic, Tuesday, everybody must come to work, you know? Traffic was really, really heavy, but that's all good news. We've got even better news to share with you. With me today is Trina Flack, our Vice President of Sales, Brock Conrad, our Vice President of Marketing, and they'll be speaking to you as well this morning. I think you're familiar with how most of our funding comes through. About 85% of our funding comes through hotel motel tax. People travel to the metro area. They spend dollars in shopping, restaurants, attractions, cultural arts, all those great things. They spend the night in a hotel. When they check out a hotel, they pay an extra 7% hotel motel tax, which then the hotelier returns that money to the state of Iowa. The state returns it back to the city. And then you divvied out 2/7ths to Ketch Des Moines, 2/7ths to Bravo, and you retain then 3/7ths. Hello. Frozen up here. There we go. This past year, we contracted with a new research company that does worldwide tourism research, actually for a lot of large cities, a lot of CVBs across the entire globe. It's called Arrivalist. And they can track visitors, that really track where they're going when they're in town, where they're spending their dollars, all kinds of great data. So, we've been utilizing that. And last year, they projected we hosted over 5.8 million visitors to the metro area. Average length of stay in a hotel was 2.8 nights. They also can give us the top 10, or actually, the top states of origin that visit Des Moines. Obviously, number one are the folks from Iowa, followed by Minnesota, Illinois, Nebraska, Missouri, Wisconsin. And then, surprising to us, we have Texas, California, Kansas, and Colorado in that top 10. So, really starting to reach out beyond just our borders. Go ahead.
Do you have numbers associated with, in terms of, I mean, the number of trips on that top 10? I mean, just out of curiosity, because, I mean, be interested in the data point. How close is Texas to the others?
Sure.
How much more are those trips from Iowa compared to some of those out-of-state folks?
Okay. Trina will get that.
I do. I'm just curious.
We also have top points of interest, which the Des Moines International Airport is number one, Jordan Creek Town Center, the Iowa Event Center, Ford Avenue, Mid-American Energy Recplex, Southwest Des Moines, the Iowa State Fairgrounds, East Village, Prairie Meadows, and Adventure Land. Round up those top 10s of attractions. Hotel occupancy getting nearly back to normal, if normal was back in 2019. Our metro occupancy last year was at 55.3, Des Moines was 52.3. You can see the average daily rate has really gone way up and continues to do so throughout 2023 so far. That's probably no surprise to any of you if you travel and know what kind of room rates you're paying out there. Turn it over to Trina.
I'll just make a note on Arrivalist first. That data is great data and something that we're putting a lot of stock in, but we've still got some bugs to work out. Jen and I have had a couple of calls on how we can really dial that into a event. So, right now, we've got a good broad look of monthly and annual visitors and kind of that overall. But our hope is to be able to really dive in to say, on a weekend, this event has this impact on an area of the community. So, that is one of our targets, and so we're still working on some of those details. So, just making a note of that. 332 conventions is what we hosted in the last year. So, we divide that in between definites and assists on our team. Definites are things that we had a hand in securing for the community, and assists are stuff that come here regardless of our involvement, that we provide services to them, but we didn't book them. So, like, the Iowa State Fair would go in under an assist for that. 176 of those events did happen because of our sales efforts. And then we booked 209 events for the future. 250 leads were sent to Des Moines properties, so that's hotels and meeting facilities. And 260 events, really out of that 332, were hosted or impacted somewhere in Des Moines. So, even if it was like an event that was hosted at the Recplex, but they booked rooms in Des Moines, that would consist of that 260 number, and then 171 of those for the future. I feel like these numbers all kind of run together, so.
So, would that, like, I know a lot of summer sports, baseball, softball.
Yep.
Is that included in some of those, obviously, some of those numbers?
Some of them, yeah. We do not track every single tournament that happens. We don't track every single small meeting that happens at a hotel. We kind of think, if that stuff can happen organically in the community without us, that's amazing, and we'll put our efforts where they're needed. But yeah, so we support a lot of the U-SAA and the USA Softball and Iowa Soccer Association and all of those. So, yeah, there are a portion of those that go into that.
And I know there's always a few teams from Texas that come up for a lot of those.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot when you see that reach of some of those baseball and basketball tournaments.
Yeah, so, just to clarify, when you say utilizing Des Moines properties, that's city of Des Moines, not Des Moines metro?
That is city of Des Moines.
Okay, gotcha.
No, like, Des Moines, like, hosted within the city limits, sorry. So, that could be the Des Moines Marriott, right? Not owned by the city, but it's, is that? Yeah, and it's so encompassing, right? Because of Drake University and the Iowa State Fairgrounds, and you think about that reach within this community of facilities, too.
Sometimes I think others forget that, the amenities that we have in Des Moines proper.
Yeah, it's big, for sure. It matters. As Greg mentioned, 2023 is strong. We have a really, really solid list of events. I will say that a huge number of these don't happen without your support and without the City of Des Moines team. The staff and the team that you guys have here makes all the difference in the world. And we hear it all the time from planners, when they come in to see the city, when they're actually hosting an event in our city. The way that this community works together is maybe something I take for granted a little bit. I don't know any different, but it's unique to our community. And they don't often see, you know, people willing to sit around the table together at the city level, at the county level, just at the staff level. So, I just want to give a shout out to city staff because it really does matter, and we don't secure or host these events without the inner workings. Just to highlight a few, we obviously just came off NCAA Men's Basketball. That was an overwhelming success for this community. And we obviously would love to host it every single year, but we have gotten rave reviews from all the teams that were part of it, the staff that was part of it, any of the media that was here. So, that really is an event that puts us on the national map, and it allows us to secure other events because they hear that Des Moines name over and over and over again. I'll call out a few others. The National Veterans Golden Age Games is an event that will be here next month, in May already. It will use Drake University, the Iowa Event Center, the Wilmark YMCA. It's veterans over 50 that participate across varying sports and varying abilities. So, we'll bring about 1,000 athletes as part of that for a week. We'll host Ironman 70.3 again. That's another event that doesn't happen, you know, without really dedicated support from the city team and makes a huge impact here. Archery National Championships, those are juniors, 800 athletes. That event actually takes place at County Park. So, they'll be here for an entire week, archery kids and their families. All Iowa Tech Basketball is three weekends of basketball. That is a real COVID success story, and the Johnson family out of Ames. AAU Junior Olympics is really our big one of the year. That's 14,000 athletes that will be here over a 10-day span. They use Drake University, the Wilmark YMCA, and then Mid-American Energy Recplex are their big facilities. The First Day Junior Olympic Games is also the overnight stop of RagBri. So, as we kind of look at how we make everybody's experience in this community top-notch, that'll be a real concentrated effort. So, thank you in advance for your support of RagBri and everything that this team is doing as well. With that, I will turn it.
Hey, look. Tell me what happens at American Cheese and Major League Quad Ball?
So, American Cheese is a convention of all cheese producers, sellers. They come in and meet together. We hosted them in 2015. But they'll spend a week here, they'll visit our restaurants, they'll do some tours of Maytag and other facilities throughout the state, and it's a professional development conference. Quad Ball is Major League Quidditch, actually. So, it has changed names from Quidditch to Quad Ball. Laura Joss on our sports team loves all these crazy odd sports. And they'll be here in August. They actually will use the fields of the Recplex.
All right.
You do.
American Cheese, they come in happy, but they leave.
He cannot help himself.
Is it just American cheese? Or do they eat cheddar and, you know, provolone?
And actually, you know, I was going to mention to the mayor, I think it's going to be forming Speedo Nationals.
I've seen too many Speedos in my life. I don't know that I need it.
I'll keep this moment. Turn it over to Brock.
So, it appears that, Trina, it appears on that list, on that last screen, looks like right in the middle of everything is RagBri. I just couldn't help but point that out.
We did that for you, Carl.
That's sort of the bingo card, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. Linda?
Staff was, who gets credit? Who is that? Who do you work with?
Everybody. I mean, I'll call out in the room Jen Schulte and Matt Anderson at the leadership level, but I think about Chip Beardsley and the whole EMS team.
Great. Just wanted to give them a shout out.
Yeah, all your city EMS, police, traffic, administration, it is across the board, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good morning. This first slide is just a quick snapshot of some of the key benchmarking metrics that we like to keep track of throughout the year. So, to kind of follow up on all the good news Trina and Greg have been talking about, we're seeing the same things with some of our metrics. So, website visits, you can see there, we are up over 1.5 million, by far the most we've ever had in a single year. I think it was about 27, 28% higher than any year prior, pre-COVID or not. So, I think that's a really good sign of people that are interested in visiting greater Des Moines. They're excited, and then they're also engaging with a lot of the content my team's creating. Top left corner there, you can kind of see some of the media and PR impressions that we go after. So, that's Earn Media that we're going after. So, not only do we do a lot of advertising, a lot of content creation, but media and PR side of things, too. We have a good team that is constantly looking to tell the story of greater Des Moines and Des Moines and our venues and all the events that we're hosting. So, that top left one there, through those efforts, we gathered almost, or actually, over 2.1 million advertising value equivalency. So, through those efforts, that's what that equaled out to, so we're really happy with that. And then that bottom left corner is a lot of the organic social media numbers that we've done through their efforts that passed year. A few awards, the patch year that we'd like to talk about. One was, we submitted for Through Meetings Today, the Best Mid-America CVB. So, that was a lot of stuff, kind of talking about Trina and her team and all the great work that they do, obviously with the city, and just Ketch Des Moines as the CVB. We are really proud of that one. PRSA, which is Public Relations Society of America, we won a merit award for that for a hype video that where we featured, the I Sisarats actually were in that video that we did. I think you guys maybe have seen that, but it's a really great video, and we won that last September. We won three Addy Awards here in the Des Moines chapter of the American Advertising Foundation. And then, a couple of weeks ago, Iowa Tourism Awards, we won two different awards there. One for Outstanding Promotional Material for the Ketch Des Moines Visitors Guide, which we've actually brought entirely in-house, and our team's producing everything from that, from the beginning to the end. And then Outstanding Niche Market for, I believe, the Hype Sports Video, which we have just recently launched, and I'm sure you guys have maybe seen that video. We actually launched that commercial during the Super Bowl. It was shown here locally, and then also during the NCAA Tournament, we ran that a few times, too. This is the Visitors Guide that we did. Like I mentioned, this is the first time that our team has completely done that in-house. So, that's from selling the ad space to the design, writing, photography, distribution, finding the printer, we use a local printer, all of that we've done this year in-house, and it's been a little bit of a source of income for us. Whereas previously, the last few, you know, 20, 30 years, we've done that as a partnership, and we think that we're going to be able to grow that, too, moving forward. This is our The Best Program, so to continue on with the S is our silent campaign that we've launched a few years ago. During COVID, this was kind of an idea that we had. We launched The Best Program, and it was bringing in locals to kind of tell the story. That was one thing that we always heard from visitors when they travel here. They want to know what the locals love, right? How to live like a local. So, we got locals to tell us what their favorite things are, whether that's the best pizza, tenderloins, et cetera, et cetera. We name it, we're kind of writing about it. And so, we launched that program a couple of years ago. It really took off big for us. And then here in the last couple of months, we actually launched a program where we're sending out these window clings to kind of let people feel excited about being included in those because they're getting voted on by locals and included. So, you can see a couple of snapshots there of some of our partners that have put those up. Greg, thank you. And then here, just specifically for City of Des Moines, we have 417 Des Moines business partners here, Des Moines, that partner with us, Ketch Des Moines. We created two TV broadcast commercials, 20 different videos created for social media and pre-roll advertising, over 32 million social media impressions through those efforts, then 32 blogs, and then we've created 20 visitor itineraries where we market those specifically, whether that's family-friendly things to do, Girls Weekend Getaway, et cetera. We're creating those and specifically targeting our market audience with those. Quickly with this, we did have over a $1.1 million total advertising spend last year. And through all that content that we're creating, this is some of the mediums that we use. So, broadcast TV, connected TV, so getting those cord-cutting consumers, paid social media marketing, organic marketing, social media marketing. I won't go through all those, but that's the whole gamut of what we're doing. And we really, if we don't dial that in, we started working with Flynn Wright, just down the street. They've really helped us kind of elevate our game a little bit on the digital side of things. Just a quick snapshot, I know we're coming off of the NCAA Tournament. So, this is some shots from some local, some local folks, but then also some national media, just talking about their experience with Des Moines and how much of a good they have here. Go ahead and play this. This is our sports video. This is a venue video we worked with Trina and her team on, creating, and. Go ahead and play it now.
And now, the starting lineup for your Greater Des Moines sports venues. A three-venue multipurpose complex in the heart of downtown Des Moines with a 17,000-seat arena and attached convention hotel. The Iowa Event Center! An 88,000-square foot skate park centrally located along the principal riverwalk with both park and street courses. The Lawrence &amp; Skate Ball! A 66-acre state-of-the-art indoor and outdoor complex in West Des Moines, offering ice arenas and soccer fields along with basketball and volleyball courts. An Olympic-sized pool with capacity for 1,500 spectators located in downtown Des Moines. The Wilmark YMCA Pool! A 14,500-seat stadium on Drake University, featuring the iconic Blue Oval, one of the premier track and field facilities in the country. Des Moines, a city says hey!
Would that bring you to the metro area? Great production. And that's Trina's sports team. That is our lure video, and we're pitching different groups and things like that. So, with that, happy to answer any questions, take comments. I would compliment the mayor on his, the mayor's served on our executive board for the last several years and has been a very good attendee. As busy as he is, traveling and what have you, he always makes a point to call in if he can't be there in person. So, appreciate you being part of us, too.
Right, Tony?
So, what is the one thing that you say that we may be missing to lure in even more events? If we are missing anything?
You mean, as far as a?
Amenities, anything that stops people from coming?
We needed airport.
There you go.
And I don't know, anything else come to mind with you guys? They always want more hotel rooms under one roof. But, you know, and I think really, you look at this explosion in the metro of sports facilities, and now, sports makes up about 45% of our total bookings. You know, I know you guys have studied the county soccer complex, and I think any additions you can add sports-wise, you know, youth sports continues just to go crazy. So, I think those are great economic generators.
Could you say that one more time for me? Could you say that one more time about the county's sports, soccer fields and such?
Well, I think anytime you can expand on that or, you know, enhance that with other amenities and things, Anything else?
Greg, thank you very much.
Good, real quick. Thank you, Greg, for all the work your team does, great materials. I appreciate the positivity and the messaging out there because that's a great counterbalance to some of the negativity for people thinking, why do I want to go to Iowa right now? I'll leave it at that. I also wanted to note, one of the best major or minor league sports communities, that seems to come up quite a bit.
Yes.
We're ranked number one or two, it seems like, quite a bit in that regard, too. So, I know that's part of a team effort as well, so thank you for all.
Yeah, I mean, even Savannah Bananas is a good example of that because they reached out. And, I mean, originally, last year, they played all major cities, and Des Moines was obviously on their radar, and now they're going to play two games here. So, that's going to be quite the spectacle as well. So, thank you all, we appreciate the partnership. Thank you.
All right. Scott, let's move on.
I believe we'll go ahead and bring Chris and Angie up. I think Chris is maybe going to start us out. This is a presentation from Homeward that was given to their board and other interested parties and stakeholders a month or two ago, and got well-received and thought it might make sense to bring that to the full council. So, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Yep, just real quick to introduce Angie. I did want to first, the city's homeless policy administrator, we hired Amber Lewis. She'll be starting next Monday. So, one of the first things we're going to have her do, obviously, she's going to meet with a lot of our community partners, but I am going to have her schedule individual meetings with all the council members. I'll sit in on those meetings as well, kind of what we did with Heather Tammingham when she first started. So, kind of similar process for that. But with that, I'll turn it over to Angie. Angie is the Executive Director for the Continuum of Care Board, and she's going to go over a study that Drake did on behalf of their board.
Thank you. Morning, everyone. Nice to see you. All right, well, it's definitely a different tone than the last presentation. So, we'll transition to that. I also do want to share that I've worked with Amber Lewis over the last five years, and so I think she will be a great addition to city staff, and I look forward to collaborating with her in her new role. So, I'm excited about that opportunity. Today, we're going to talk about the Unsheltered Study, and want to also thank this organization and the city because you are one of the sponsors for this study. And we appreciate that, and I think it's an important tool for us to move forward with. I'm going to go fairly quickly through this, as we've got 20 minutes, and I want to make sure we have time for questions. And basically, we've seen an increase of unsheltered homelessness across the country, but also locally, particularly in the last year and a half. Obviously, pandemic has some impact from that perspective. And we wanted to look at and better understand some of the barriers to our overall system. So, we're looking at things from a system perspective. While it is talking quite a bit about shelters, that's not the only thing that's also being addressed within that work. addressed within that work. So it's important that, as well, that we look at and get understanding and input from people that are living unsheltered and what their perceptions and experiences have been. So again, this work came out of the Extreme Weather Work Group, which was also facilitated through a request from this group here. We had several groups get together, worked with Drake, Dr. Elizabeth Talbert and Dr. Matthew Recker, to be able to create the survey as well as the overall study. And again, thank you to the funders that we have available. It has definitely been a collaborative effort, and from the very beginning, and getting to some other thank yous from the community, but also specifically to our homeless service providers and the work they do every day. It's hard, and we want to thank as well the study participants that we're willing to share a lot of specific and personal information. So within the study itself, get a little bit more of the study basics and background. So there's 152 surveys that were conducted with people living unsheltered. Thirty-seven of that, there's a sample of 37 individuals that also had in-depth interviews ranging from 45 minutes to two hours, depending upon what that individual was willing to share. And if you think about it, with the unsheltered count that we had last summer, I believe it was 184 individuals, that's a really good sampling, a very good sampling of the individuals experiencing homelessness during that timeframe. So we started the work in February in creating a study, working with internal review boards or institutional review boards to make sure everything was done appropriately. And then interviews happened through June and through October of this last year. One of the things that was done in addition to the interview and surveys was the study team also conducted background research through literature studies, so as other unsheltered homelessness studies that had taken place, as well as looking at evidence-based practices. So when we talk about the background literature here, it highlights some core points. And really, also what it highlights for us is that the barriers and struggles that we have in Pope County are pretty consistent around the country, what's experiencing. So that lets us know that maybe some of those best practices that have been successful in those other areas might likely work for us as well in our community. But it highlights the fact that health outcomes are much more materially worse for people who aren't housed, that there are ordinances that are common throughout the nation for "not in my backyard" type of stuff that further marginalizes individuals. People that are unsheltered also have higher risk of being physically and emotionally victimized within just being out and exposed from that perspective. And then, you know, there's that desire from individuals who are unsheltered to maintain basic autonomy when they're entering shelter and receiving those services. Survey findings, so these are the surveys, 152 surveys that took place. I think a couple of things are important to highlight. One of those is that question of what would you want for a home? What is important to you? Basically, anything that was safe, affordable, and where they could spend time with family members, friends, pets, have a safe place, they have property, things along that line. The important thing to note is that of 143 people that responded to that question, 141 said that's what they wanted. Only two individuals said they wanted to stay outside. I think sometimes there's that perception that people prefer to live outside, and this is the answer to that, that no, that's not their preference for various reasons that it happens. But folks, if they could have that choice, would rather live in a secure place that's safe for them to have as their home. Twenty-four percent said they didn't care about, like, anything about living outside. Fifty-seven have been consistently, so 57% have been consistently living outside. And then on the side there, it highlights some of those things that would be helpful for individuals during summer or winter weather.
Angie, excuse me. Could you speak closer to the microphone, please?
Sure. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Some additional question that we asked, the last question in the survey that was asked is, what would you tell someone in charge? Left it very wide open and said, what would that piece of information be? And I think it's very interesting that the highest answer is compassion. Be more compassionate. If you look at the top four, it's be more compassionate, help us and talk to us and gather our expertise. And not saying that more resources generally isn't important, but of the top four, it's some of those things that we can look at and how we do things in addition to those resources there. From a respondent categorization or demographics, you'll see that we have a large majority, 66% of those respondents identify as male, which is, I think, more reflective of our unsheltered population. We see a larger percentage from that perspective. We do see individuals that identify as transgender and non-binary also within our community. We see from a race perspective, there's still overrepresentation from our community, but it's not as high as maybe some of the other family homelessness, particularly within the black community. There's still overrepresentation as well within our ethnic community, but not as high as within the overall population, overall folks. And what you're seeing, too, from an age perspective, this is the HUD category. They're making some changes moving forward, so we'll have a better idea. But 9% of the population is over the age of 63. And our perception is that our unsheltered homeless population is aging in our community. We're going to have more data at this point, next point in time, that will be shared coming up this month, that will give us maybe a little bit more detail moving forward. But that's our anecdotal information. But we think now we will have data moving forward to be able to verify that that's what is happening in our community.
What would the implication be of having an aging homeless population?
Well, I would say, you know, you're going to have to look at what resources you have. I mean, that will also mean, are they aging in place? Are there other resources? Do we need to look at nursing homes from that perspective? There's limited hopes that will accept those individuals who are unsheltered, possibly. I mean, what are those resources that we need? Is there more medical respite resources that will be needed? I think it will be something that we'll have to answer, but what are those supportive services? Will we need more connection with adult supportive services? And what does that look like? More interaction with VHS from that perspective. So again, we'll have to fully understand that, but I think those are just a few areas of consideration. One thing I wanted to share, too, was this quote, and it's from the study, and it's exactly as the person shared it, and it says, "Everybody thinks we're homeless because we chose that. Sometimes that's not, not the issue. It just so happened that our money just wasn't there because our job being so stupid. And now we're back on the streets." That's, we didn't choose that. We don't choose to have two jobs and still have no money. So again, I think that shows you the large scope of individuals that are affected. You have folks that are working, you have folks that have disability, you have a variety, wide variety of individuals that are unsheltered. So throughout the survey and the in-depth interviews, the study participants detailed their living experiences, living outside, and their decision-making processes about seeking emergency shelter. And the researcher has identified some common themes about why folks might not choose to be in an emergency shelter situation and some of the barriers that they have. So the information, again, does not refer to specific providers. It is about the entire response system and as a whole, Pope County, and how we can work together to better improve. Sorry, I got some allergies going on here. So they were broken down, as I said, in some different areas. Oops, sorry. Forgot to actually give them to you. I was focusing on my comments there. So part of it is physical conditions of the shelter, and there was concern about crowding, a large number of bunks in one room, and sanitation concerns, I think, particularly with COVID, those are higher concerns after that specific timeframe. And then when you look at it, too, sometimes these are perceptions. Like, there was one gentleman that had a perception about the cleanliness of shelters, but he hadn't been there for seven years. Seven years ago, there was a little bit of an issue, right? But that's the perception that he has, and that's, you know, sometimes when things are shared. Or there was also perceptions with folks, there were concerns about bed bugs. None of them had experienced it, but that was still a concern. So part of that, too, is communication. How are we communicating what's happening within our systems and services and doing street outreach and things along that line? Rules, routines, and norms of shelters. Now, we're not saying that there shouldn't be rules and guidelines, because we need those from safety perspective. But what are some of those rules? There was one rule in a facility that talked about limiting access to personal devices such as phones. Is that, is there a reason for that? Is there a specific reason for that that's effective? And like, thinking about those things from that perspective, sometimes there's confusion about, right? And so how do we better communicate what those expectations are within the systems? What makes sense for the overall things? Concerns about timing out, you know, like, just what are those things that we have within our system? Sometimes perception of shelter staff. Many clients talked about very positive experience that they had, but not all. Some expressed they perceived maybe shelter staff weren't caring or were inconsistent in enforcement of rules. So again, just thinking about how we're doing things in general within the work. Challenges with other clients. Respondents were very open and honest about their challenges with mental health and other health issues that they might have. And oftentimes, their own mental health issues made it difficult for them to be around large groups, anxiety with crowds, whatever that might be. So that was a challenge, or maybe it was a challenge of being near someone else that also had a mental health issue. So again, what are we thinking about from that congregate, large setting? Challenges with lack of privacy and things along that line. When you have a large group of folks that have trauma and experiencing that, and they're in larger rooms together, that could be a challenge for some individuals. There are also some gender-specific experiences and barriers. We have binary gender division within our shelters, and so sometimes that can be proving difficult for individuals that are trans. And/or if you have a partner that's of the opposite gender and you'd like to stay together, that's not a availability at this time within our community. Sometimes unwanted attention or just fears. You will see a lot of the women coming into the system have experienced trauma prior to becoming homelessness. And so there's that concern about their safety. So from women and trans individuals' perspective. Then that comment about apathy and previous balance of daily survival. Individuals talked a lot about the fact that past and current trauma contributed to their experience of depression. Sometimes that makes it very hard for them to move forward. Additionally, is if you're focusing on where your next meal is, how are you going to get water, where are you going to go to the bathroom, it's very, very hard for you to focus on. Let's think about planning for getting a job, moving on to a permanent supportive housing. So it's hard to think about things and plan things long-term if you're focused on that survival. And we have a prioritization system right now for services, because we do not have enough services to serve everybody within our community. So we have to prioritize the most vulnerable individuals to receive those resources. So that can be frustrating from a perspective of an individual, if there's not enough available resources for them to exit homelessness, or they've been on a waitlist for a long time. It feels like, why should I come in? There's nothing for me available to. You know, we try to expand and work on additional resources within our community, but as a fact of life, unfortunately for us at this point.
Go ahead. You want to turn your mic on there?
How about paying for those services? So there's one thing to say, it's difficult to schedule support services, not, maybe not enough providers. But is that a Medicaid issue as well, or the ability to pay?
I think it's having available housing, it's having support services. I think there is some possibilities. We can have, we can have conversations with our Medicaid service providers about that. They do have some funding for homelessness services, and within that, like, they participate in some of our committees that we do. But there's also some structural changes from that perspective that likely would have to happen within maybe legislature or how Iowa Medicaid does some things. So that would be that perspective. The funding that comes to us from the Continuum of Care and Emergency Solutions Grants, those are two fundings that we work with regularly, are very much prescribed. There's federal legislation about what is eligible categories for those. So, for example, emergency shelter is not an eligible category in Continuum of Care, but it is for Emergency Solutions Grants, right? Homelessness prevention is eligible in ESG dollars, but it's not in Continuum of Care dollars. So there's like different guidelines and prescriptions that come to us from a federal perspective. I think that's for us to have conversations on the state level. The state, through one of their funds, administers $1.8 million to the homeless system throughout the whole state, and that's all. So we need to have conversations on that state level to talk about, this is a need across the state, not just here locally, that we need additional resources to be able to be supportive and building more affordable housing across the state, here as well. But across the state is important as well. So it's a myriad of things. Policy implications. Sorry, are there any other questions? I'll just keep moving on.
Going back to the state, because a lot of the people coming into the Des Moines area are coming because we have services. I think at one point, almost 46% were from out of the Des Moines last known address. So to your point of, what is the state doing from a statewide, so people can stay in their communities?
Right.
It'd be helpful, I would think.
I think, yes, it is important. And I think that that number was probably specific to some certain providers. We find overall within the information that we have and collect, because we do ask that, particularly with point and time, about where's your last location permanent address. We see our numbers overall more system-wise as about 84% come from the state of Iowa, with about 86% of those folks being specific to Pope County. So, yes.
I missed that. I couldn't hear that.
Okay, sorry about that. I said, we see about, and I can get you the exact numbers, but, and we'll probably have new exact numbers with the point and time release. But when we see the folks that we serve, about 80, I might have sent this backwards, 84% come from, who we serve in Pope County are from the state. And of that, 86% of the individuals are from Pope County. So we're talking, and probably, I'm not going to estimate that, I'm sorry. I don't, I'm not going to multiply that in my brain. Yeah, mid-60s. So, yeah, it's not too far.
Yeah, a lot of people come from outside of the metro area. So it's a, it is a statewide issue, like you said. 1.8 doesn't go too far.
No, it doesn't. And that was a big year, because it's based off a real estate transfer tax, and that's 5% of that, and that was one of the higher levels. So again, that's a need overall, and I think we have conversations to have on that.
And how are they getting here? How are they getting to Des Moines?
I mean...
Do you know?
No. I mean, I think it's various reasons. They think they have a support system here, you know, transportation, bus, variety of things, friends, whatever that might be. You know, we support individuals, too. Like, we have some, we've had some flexible fundings. We fully utilize those fundings. But if someone has a support system somewhere else and needs some transportation funds to get back to their support system, we've had that flexible funding to be able to utilize that to get them to an area where they have supports, to be able to help them get to that stable housing.
So Angie, not only the housing, but what do we do for jobs and job placement and job training, or any type of resources that we provide?
So that is one thing where we're doing a lot of partnerships. I think you're seeing certain providers having programs that are social enterprise programs, whether it's AgriHood or it's Rooftop Gardens. There's another organization that has a cleaning and moving company that they do and make repairs to apartments, things along that line. So there's that, because sometimes you're going to need, some folks can't go directly into full employment, right?
Right.
You're going to need that transition to maybe a little bit more flexible employer that'll give you the second or third or fourth chances on, you know, getting that stability going there. So I think there's that. We also have partnership. We just had a training with Iowa Workforce Development across the state. Our Continuum of Care across the state are partnering to do statewide training, because we want training to be consistent for all the service providers. And so we've been partnering to do that on a regular basis. And last month, it was Iowa Work... And last month it was Iowa workforce development. We also have partnerships like locally with Children's and Family of Iowa. They're the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act provider. And they also have a connect careers program specifically for youth and young adults. And so there's that partnership and interaction with individuals from that area. So there are efforts and work, but again, it's, we have to address multiple barriers and so that might not be the first thing that's addressed. And so, but we're going to support folks when they're ready to be able to move that area forward. Yeah. So looking at the policy implications, they looked at the specific barriers and looked at the interviews, information, the, the evidence-based practices and, you know, what are things that we can do? There's some longer-term structural changes as well as just understanding this is a jumping off point. These recommendations are a jumping off point for us to have conversation with providers, communities, to have this be a collaborative effort to come together to talk about what do we need next? What can we do? I would love to do all of these, but we don't have the money, right? So what are our prioritization of things that we can do? What's most important for us communities? What do we need to do to have conversations with funders within our communities as well as looking at those other resources? Is there a foundation that would be beneficial to reach out to and have some conversations? What are some of those other partners that we maybe haven't thought about? So we, again, this is a jumping off point. They're into three areas, short, medium and long-term. The first recommendation, because it was coming out during the winter time, were things that could be done immediately. So organizations can look at their comfort and accessibility issues. What are those practices and policies that influence people, their ability, desire to enter shelter? Are there some low cost, low barrier changes? You know, you're not going to be able to change your whole structure physically within that, but are there some rooms that you can adjust a little bit? What does that look like? Can you turn on the morning lights a little later as opposed to 5:00 AM or whatever it might be? So those are just some things there. The other was survival action plans and follow-up with people living outside. We have for organizations that have case management on their street outreach teams, we have a monthly meeting. They communicate often, more often than that, but monthly. We come together with their list of individuals who are unsheltered and that they consider highly vulnerable. So for example, before their first extreme cold weather, they identify five individuals that they thought would perish if they stayed outside and worked together from the organizations to get them moved into safety and were able to address that. So there are folks working day-to-day with street outreach, trying to be able to help folks get that security that they need.
Angie, what groups attend that monthly?
The monthly meeting?
What do you call it, update or just?
Street outreach meeting.
Okay.
And for folks that do that case management, it is the VA attends, Iowa Homeless Youth Center, primary healthcare, Hope Ministries and Central Iowa Shelter Services. Those are the, the main, the main organizations that have that case management, that are able to have professionals doing that work and reaching out. Additionally, they also participate in the homeless management information system because you're sharing personal information regarding that. And there's a release of information between those organizations that allows you to share that information. So that's the other consideration. Because this is private information about those individuals, about maybe their health issues and things like that. So we have to have that agreement and release of information to be able to share that.
And Angie, where's JAPA?
They currently don't participate in the homeless management information system. Additionally, they don't, to my knowledge, have professional case managers that do that work. It's volunteers.
And we've been told that they've not been invited. Are you inviting them?
They are not invited at this meeting because they do not participate in HMIS. I've invited them to participate many times in submitting information into HMIS.
They don't have any full-time case managers, they're volunteers.
Could you just maybe help us understand, when you talk about case management and what someone is doing when they're a case manager versus a volunteer who, who maybe reaches out to someone and gives them a sandwich, even on a regular basis? Like what, what is, what's a case manager doing that is, that is different? And what, what is the training that is involved for a case manager?
There's likely training about de-escalation, about, and motivational interviewing as well as also guidelines, safety guidelines, things along that line, setting boundaries within that relationship, right? And so you're going to be meeting regularly. It may take you years to develop a relationship. You're taking case notes and making entries into the system about when you met with them. This is their plan. You're setting a plan for them, meeting with them, whether it's to help them get their ID or what that looks like forward, documenting that within the system as well as trying to connect them to housing services. So those are just very high level, some of those things that happen. But it is, you know, there's special training that is required from that. There's usually an educational background. We have some folks that have masters in social work. So there's just a variety of individuals from that perspective. I'm sure I'm under identifying all the training that needs, but that gives you an example.
But when you talk about IS and.
Sorry.
And taking notes, for example, I mean, essentially if someone is trained and is working within the system, you're building things up for everyone that follows after, right?
Right.
Because you're identifying, I mean, sometimes it can be as simple a thing as if someone doesn't have an ID, that's a barrier to getting.
Right.
Other services and knowing that, I mean, that might be a first step that you have to do to work with someone. A case manager is going to be identifying that type of need and, and some of those basic follow-ups.
Right. So if like one individual's identified in the system, they could have a different case manager maybe come upon that individual or they just stick with her. So I'm just saying, you would be able to share that information.
Right.
If you're in the system. So if two case managers, one's gone, somebody else runs it, comes into, they have a better coordinated effort.
Exactly. And it's highly likely that they're going to be served by more than one service provider within the system, even if it's a referral for housing services or when they come in to do a centralized intake, there'll be information about them within that system. And I'm sorry, I keep using HMIS, it's homeless management information system, just to remind folks what that is. And you sign a, an agreement with Institute for Community Alliances. There's data quality requirements as well as definitions of what, what is counted as, you know, this definition of homelessness and, you know, successes and things along that line, right? And so that's why it's important that we have that consistent data quality and the consistent information. That's why we're excited from a shelter perspective, we now have 100% of our shelters participating again. So that is an important piece of information for us to be able to make decisions within our community, also to look at the resources that we're utilizing and to look at things like vulnerability index scores and seeing that we're seeing more of our community households that are experiencing homelessness score in those higher need categories. We're up to 55% as of 2022, up from 37, just two years per year, yes, for that. So we're seeing folks with more barriers and more needs and more vulnerabilities.
And so all the things that you just talked about, JAPA does not record any of those things. It's not in the central data that.
Correct.
We're trying to all work together and do.
Correct.
Because they don't.
They were at one.
Full-time people to do that.
They were at one time, they had transitionist staff we've offered and, because you have to go through training, right? To participate within that and it has not been accepted at this.
You, you've offered to help train their staff?
Yes.
I think I'd like to hear from JAPA to say that because I think JAPA has a little different spin on it.
I'm happy to.
He seems to have a different spin on a lot of different things.
Well, I just.
So I have no interest of listening to anything that he has to say about any of it.
About somebody saying this is what JAPA does when JAPA's not here to speak.
Yeah, that's.
I can only share that I've sent emails inviting them and they've chosen not to at this time. That's what I can tell you from that perspective. So, you know, we are open to have them participating. It would be great if they would like to participate in HMIS. It would help us in verification of homelessness as a process, you know, and, and following the agreements and guidelines and the data quality, that would be great. All right, we're going to move on to midterm policy recommendations. Again, this is going to take some time to put these forward and move these forward. We're going to begin transitioning, the recommendation was transitioning to low barrier, non-congregate shelter, creating the more of those private emergency shelter settings. It could be individual rooms within a larger space. It could be a room of four or five people. That might not be private, but as opposed to 50, you can do it. Some folks have created a shelter in a hospital, in a hotel setting and have that shelter performed there. I think there's a lot of variability of what that looks like. This was the recommendation that the unsheltered individuals that participated really wanted or individuals who are unsheltered really wanted. This is what their greatest hope, I guess, would say, would have that more privacy within the system itself. Right.
Is there, I mean, because the shelter has literally hundreds of people in the, in the same setting. How, how small of a group would be non-congregate? I mean, is it one or two people? Is it 10? Is it, I mean, what, what?
I think.
You know, when we're thinking about non-congregate, what does that mean?
I think it depends on the building you have available, right? So for example, Seattle has a non-congregate shelter that's like 130 folks, right? So they are able to serve that. And there's, you could do 30, you could do, you know, 50. And I want to say this, this is an and and situation, right? We're going to need all the resources that we currently have and then look at that, that kind of transition, right?
So that, I mean, that wasn't particularly, I mean, 130 would be considered non-congregate?
If they have private, private rooms.
Right. So that's what I'm trying to get to. What, what number of people, I mean, do you have to have a completely private room for it to be non-congregate? Could you have four people? Like what, what are we talking about and what are the range?
Well, I, I think you have that flexibility in that. You could have private rooms, you could have rooms with a couple of folks in there. I would say even to four or five people within a room, right? There's things you'd have to manage within that. But again, a lot of that has to do with feeling like they have a lock on the door, a safe place for them to be, right? So I, I think we have that ability to look at what that is or to examine different options across the country to see what is, what we could do within our community. Does that help?
But didn't we try the hotel setting? And I'm sure that you've seen.
Right.
Probably some of the images that was shared with some of us.
Right.
Once we did some of that? I mean, we, we have tried that.
But I would say that's different in the aspect of, we were in pandemic, we were trying to just take care of things, right? You're going to structure things a little bit differently. You might have, I don't know, I'm just making this one up, but like you might have room checks within that or you might have a, a regular meeting area, more congregate area. Like it's going to be, when it's your day-to-day location, right? It's going to be different than you're trying to run two separate locations, you're trying to take care of everything and you've got people coming in and out. You're going to have consistency of staff, you're going to have consistency of just rules and how things are going. You're going to, you're going to think about things. What are you going to do if there's a DV situation? What are you going to do if domestic violence? Domestic violence, sorry.
You're going to need to talk so we can understand.
Sorry. What are you going to do if there's a domestic violence situation? What are you going to do if, I don't know, you don't see someone that day and you want to do a room check, just to make sure they're okay, right? I think we have an opportunity to do things differently and not while we're just trying to survive.
So basically you'd have support systems of the larger unit. You would have all the qualified people and have rules and you'd have the things that go on that you normally have.
And I assume there's probably a best practice, like Connie, Connie Point, like there's a probably a best practice from a staffing and a.
Oh, yeah.
Practices and procedures that if you're not meeting that, it's maybe less likely to be an effective solution.
Right.
And so understanding, because it's not, it's not just sending folks to a hotel, like there's an amount of staffing and.
And support system.
Right. It needs to go with it for it to be successful.
So we had no support system when we did that?
We did. No, we, we did, right? But you're, you're transitioning, you probably weren't staffed to the level that you might normally be because you're trying to run two different locations at the same time, right? I can't speak to the work because I didn't do that on a daily basis, right? But I just want to also say, like, folks were doing what they could, right? And doing the best that they could within the situation, right?
Right.
So, but when it's planned out and, and you have time to plan for it and have months to prepare, that's a very different situation.
Than reacting to at the moment?
Yes. And, you know, having folks being sick, having folks, you know, the variety of things. So anyway. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So two questions, Angie. So the, the, when you say non-congregate, that means like sleeping rooms, but you still have a shared dining room, right?
Right.
Okay. Of Midwest cities and I don't know if mid, or cities that have winter of our size, is there someone that you think is doing a really great job addressing the homeless needs? Or something that we could aspire to or use example? You've, you've mentioned best practices, but is there a city that you're really keen on?
I'm going to have to come back with you on that one because there's.
Sure.
To think about one that's comparable to us, like Minneapolis does some really interesting and unique things, but they have a whole level of funding that's very different than ours. They've got a lot of state funding that comes in, they've got a lot of different things from that perspective and supports. But yeah, no, I, I need to come back to you on that one to see if there's some others. There's some different organizations, you know, that have achieved some functional zero homelessness, meaning they have just the right level of supports and needs for their community, but they're a little bit smaller than we are.
All right. I think in the last, I'll say six weeks, the Sunday New York Times had an entire section devoted to homelessness. Or, or people that are experiencing homelessness. I think that's what you're coaching us to.
Yes.
Yeah. And, I mean, they even visited some cities as small as Rockford, Illinois, just to report on their issues. But I don't know if there's examples of other cities that you glean, but that would be helpful, maybe worth a, a little bit of a road trip to see what other, other nearby communities are doing. So, so if you can dig out some information, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Very happy to. In fact, so this is a little bit of a brag, but a little bit of an answer for that. Homeward's been nominated by Drake for an Iowa-Minnesota campus compact award for a presidential community collaborative award. And so we have a staff person going up to Minnesota to be able to accept that award, but he's also going to stop at a non-congregate shelter up there to also do a tour to see what that looks like. So we have done, we're doing a little bit of that, but we could do a larger visit if we wanted to. So, all right. I know I'm kind of going over my time, but we'll continue to move forward. Creating resources and spaces for, to address gender and family-specific issues to increase capacity for families in shelter. We currently do not have a women's only shelter within our community and I think that's a gap and a need for our cis and transgender females within our community to be able to have that. And again, you know, we have a waitlist for families as well.
I hope the ministry do anything like that with, I know that we have a few places that we've visited and I know there's a specific one in my ward that is women and family.
Right.
Specific. I know it's not very big.
Right. And they are, you know, building on, right?
Yep.
But even in my conversations with the leadership there, they don't feel that they are a emergency shelter.
Okay.
They don't have same-day entry into the program.
Right.
And things along that line. So they would not classify themselves as such or have not in the past.
And is the state, I mean, they're, they're not willing to contribute to something like that. I mean, I'm sure you've had discussions with, with the state and.
You would.
Others that have way more discretionary, undiscretionary money that, that, that we have funding.
I think.
That's expensive.
It is.
I mean.
It is. But I think it's a need within our community and a gap.
There's not a doubt in my mind, it's not a need, but.
No, I think there is those conversations that we need to have and have it on a statewide level, but I think there's other options that we can propose for funding on a statewide level. It's just not, it's a really hard time right now, right? To do that within our current legislative session.
I was going to say a hard time because they don't have billions in reserve or a hard time because of
I think that's it.
You know, there's others that have way more in reserve that are local than what we have also that would maybe be a good resource to contribute to something like that, for sure.
And that's one of those things that we're going to invite funders to have that conversation and you all are going to be invited to be participating in that, right? But others will be as well.
Not to say that we wouldn't contribute, but obviously we couldn't, you know, we couldn't afford something like this on our own and sponsor that and fund it and that's.
Right, we would, you know, it'd be just like any other, other than the other option, we look at various funding sources, right? And we know that'll be a long-term plan and situation. Some of the other things that are mentioned from perspective or recommendations of Worman Station as an alternate overflow emergency shelter, improve physical conditions within the shelter, about that mitigating overcrowding and the shelter environment from that perspective. Reassess rules and norms and from their routines, you know, what are those? Evaluate those rules within the shelter and, you know, there are rules needed, right? As we talked about from a safety perspective, but how are they administered and how does it work? And what's communicated and over-communication, 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 right? Disrupt conflicts between clients and limit onsite drug use. We, none of the shelters that we have allow drug use, but we know that sometimes it happens. So how do we best support the staff and the organizations and specific areas for non-triggering spaces? So again, you've got a lot of folks with trauma happening, so what can we do to support them in responding? And then strengthening relationships between organizations, between staff and clients, that, you know, ensure that consistent training. We're looking at a continuum, is there some additional training that we can help arrange for all the organizations within our community? So we know some folks are, they do some great training within that, but not everybody's the same size of organization and maybe there's some training we can provide as a community level that's helpful as well. And there's been just a lot of turnover of staff. This is a number from Omaha. I don't know what the number would be here, but they talked about 85% of their shelter staff had turned over during the pandemic. So that's just a lot of folks to continue to train on a regular basis. So are there some things that maybe we can put on recorded or computer-based so that it's available on a as-needed basis? So those are some things we're talking about. I think, I don't know on that one on the top of my head.
That would be a good data point you might want to ask because I don't think it's even close to that. I think that they turned around and ended up paying their staff more to stay and keep them, similar to what others have done through the pandemic.
I do think that you are seeing just in general in social work, there's been a burnout and a turnover. And so there's just constant hiring. So again, it's things like that that we need to address. I agree, I don't think it's 85%, but, you know, it's higher than it has been. It's hard work, it's hard work on a day-to-day basis.
It's frustrating.
And to acknowledge that too, is we don't pay our staff and support and resources enough, right? That's a challenge. We're giving feedback on a federal level on what that looks like from a funding perspective, but again, that has to go through legislation. But I think that's something that we needed to talk about as a community as well. And host regular listening sessions for clients and staff. From a long-term perspective, strengthen the data collection and practices. So we have the homeless management information system, which is really good. The street outreach stuff is not as great and that comes from all the software providers and no one really has a great solution. So we do a lot of things within the system, but we also do some things on the spreadsheets. That's not the best option from that, but we're looking at what we can do so we can make better decisions from a data perspective in our street outreach teams as well. Investing in affordable permanent housing as well as more permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing is the most highest, is the highest level of support that we have within our community. So folks with multiple barriers are there. Individuals that are in permanent supportive housing have a disability and typically are chronically homeless. So those are folks with high barriers and need a lot of supports and long-term supports and it might be many years of support. But again, those are, that's an important resource for us in our community. To have that wrapped with those supportive services, that's what's going to make it, you know, you talk about housing first, it's not just housing, it's housing first and supportive services.
Be the Monarch project, is that?
That would be, that's not supported on our continuum of care funding, but yes, but because you would have those apartments there and my understanding is there's going to be like mental health and substance use treatment supports and case management available.
Right, and that, I mean, that project is designed to target people who are currently experiencing homelessness, right?
Yes, we're going to, they're going to take referrals through our centralized intake process system.
And could you remind folks like timeline, like where is that in the status? I don't, I don't think we've heard.
Where is it located?
On Merle Hay.
So it's a hotel conversion?
Yeah.
On Merle Hay?
I'm going to tell you, I'm not sure the exact, the last thing I knew that they were waiting for, because you know, they require your funding stack to be all released to you all at the same time and my understanding is they were still waiting for funding from the state on a certain program that they've really received. So it could have happened by now, I just haven't had that update.
Is that, that is in the city of Des Moines?
It's right on the border.
On the border. I think it's, yeah.
The first site.
Yeah. The other thing, and I'll wrap this up because I know I'm way over. Soliciting feedback from unsheltered individuals and frontline providers. I think we did the soliciting feedback for the study from unsheltered individuals that are unsheltered and we just need to continue to incorporate that, people with lived experience, regardless of what your experience is, right? Lived experience, understand how to use those services or what is needed for them. But we also need to listen to frontline staff because they're doing the work on a day-to-day basis and what's that look like? Make sure that we use it from a leadership perspective and direction and also when we're making high-level decisions within our county. So that is, that, next steps, sorry, I should tell you. We actually have a meeting this afternoon that's facilitated with our leaders of service providers. There's about 20 folks that are going to be participating to talk about what is, do a SOAR analysis, you know, so what are, what we've achieved, what are our aspirations? What are we going to look like with the recommendations? And what are some of the prioritizations that we want to do? We're going to do a couple of sessions there. Talked about, we're going to have meetings with funders from that perspective and also likely community members. So we're really trying to make sure that this isn't a study that just happens and sits on the shelf, but this is a study that we look at and talk about within our community. This is good information for us to be able to make decisions, to be able to move things forward. And so we want to have action taken from this study and it be a community collaboration. So I invite you as City of Des Moines, as representatives and city staff to participate in that process. And we look forward to that and think we can come up with some really great solutions for our community.
And I don't know if you're comfortable addressing this, but, you know, one of the things I look, when I look through this study, there are, there are some recommendations that it's just going to be, you know, working through practices and policies and that could be ongoing. But there are a handful of these recommendations that are both capital and operationally expensive, right? So things that we're not going to have the capacity to do all of those at once.
Right.
Or even over time and the prioritization there. So, you know, there are two or three different shelter options, for example, the congregate, the non-congregate, the women and family shelter. And then there's, you know, the additional permanent supportive housing. Do you give us a sense in terms of, I mean, they're obviously all important, but if you were to prioritize this being you, like, I mean, in your sense of what the experts would say, okay, fill this gap first or focus here first?
I can give you my personal opinion. I think I can give you a community opinion after our meetings coming up. I think a significant gap in our community that is endangering the women in our community is not having a women's-only shelter. Personally, I think that's a significant gap within our, in our resources, you know, and women camping are very much in danger of assault on a regular basis. And so we just need that additional resource within our community. So that's Angie's personal opinion and not the organization's opinion or the collaborative group that's going to get together this afternoon.
Probably setting priorities and where they see that.
Right, that's part of the work that we're doing. We're doing two, two-hour sessions with a facilitator to be able to bring that forward and then have more discussions with funders, with community partners and folks on that perspective.
Is there a funding source through the federal government for a facility for women and families? I mean, are we able to apply for anything like that?
I'm not, I haven't seen anything specific to that. I think there's different funding sources like, and I know enough to be dangerous about this, but community development block grant dollars or it could be some other, some other different resources, but you currently utilize those for other things right now. So I think there could be, there are, I will say, notice the funding opportunities coming out quite a bit through the current federal administration. And so my understanding is there are some things happening yet this fall. We don't know exactly what that will be, but it could be some of those resources. Well, I appreciate the time today and unless there's any other questions, thanks for letting me go over.
Anybody have anything real quick?
I mean, I just wanted to thank you and Homeward and all the providers and Drake for doing this. I mean, I think this is some really good information. I think it'd be great to circulate the full study to the council for those of us who just want to have that as a background document.
Sure.
I think this is a good roadmap for our thinking on these issues going forward. And I know it was a ton of effort to actually collect the data and to work with all of the stakeholders to get this put together. So thank you for doing that and for sharing it with us.
You're very welcome, thank you. Appreciate your support.
All right, Ms. Manager, let's talk about ARPA.
I asked staff to put together a status of the allocations. As you're all council members and the public's well aware, we've fully allocated all the funds that we've received from the federal government. But with the lengthy list of recipients, there's a lot of process yet behind each of those with agreements that are necessary to make sure we live up to the obligations of those federal funds with reports, as you might imagine, compliance after the fact, after they receive the funds and make sure they spend it properly. So with that, I thought it might be helpful to understand what additional agreements still need to come forward, what we're looking at for a timeline and how we can get every penny of that out to the organizations that duly need it. So with that, I've asked finance and the assistant city managers to be available to answer questions.
I'll just quickly talk about the form that you guys have in front of you. What we ended up doing with this sheet is listing out all the different projects. And then the project status, we've got, the yellow didn't show up very well on the proof, but you've got two different check marks, you've got yellow and green. The green ones are the ones that we have had agreements or different items to where we've already obligated. So we've got kind of two different terminologies that we're trying to utilize on this sheet. The amount column is kind of what you guys have allocated for ARPA funds. And then there is an obligated by quarter and that is the additional council action, whether it is an agreement or with a third party or if it's like a contractor, contract for services that we are going to do for like, let's say, the water mains or sanitary sewers. So from that standpoint, that's where you're kind of seeing when we've been doing those obligations. And then there is the column off to the right that talks about the total obligated thus far as well as how much is remaining. So the colors of the project status, the yellow is, we are currently working through some of those agreements or have had some agreements go through. The, kind of the gray box is ones where we're kind of needing to do a lot more kind of work on those particular ones. And there is a cup, I think there's like four of those that we're going to work through a little bit more. But at this time, we have to report information to the Department of Treasury on a quarterly basis. That's why we structured this kind of based on that kind of concept of each quarter. That's what I have to hand out. Yeah, yeah, so we have some, we have some items that are going to be coming on this next Monday's meeting for some of the specific agreements for like the youth summer cleanup program and I believe the East Euclid Youth Center as well. Those are coming in this April, but we have, we have, and working with the staff working on this, since it hits multiple departments, we're just keeping them on our radar as we work through. We have to have them obligated by the end of 2024. So we'll have to have some sort of agreement or contract award prior to the end of calendar 2024.
2026?
Yes, yep. But as soon as, as soon as that obligation piece happens and let's say it ends up not being spent by the 2026th, you can't reallocate it after that point. So we're being as diligent as possible, reviewing all of the different categories to make sure that we are comfortable with what's being obligated through that 2024 timeframe.
Right, so if we obligate something by the end of 2024 and a project doesn't happen, we have to return those funds to the treasury, is that?
Yeah, because there is no way to obligate it after the December 2024.
Right, so any flexibility, so essentially, the things that are in, in yellow right now, where we're still figuring that out, if something falls through and we know that's not going to happen, we would have an opportunity, but only in the next year and a half, essentially.
Yeah, I would anticipate as we wrap up different agreements that we have, we would probably have another look at the very end of 2024 to evaluate if we don't think that those projects are going to be moving forward.
Wouldn't we do it at the end of this year, of '23 and evaluate what's, at least we have another 12 months?
We, yeah, we are, we're continually doing that, so on a staff standpoint.
How come Bravo's lit up in yellow? Didn't we already allocate 750 to them?
The agreement, I think, Mike? I think the agreement possibly will be on Monday, the next agenda. They were just getting specifics of who they were breaking it down to.
Yeah, so this was based off of the March 31st and so.
There's a lot of stuff coming probably at this agenda.
And as you can kind of see, the total for the March 31st was over almost 21 million. So we did ramp up a lot over the, over the last couple of quarters.
Right. Is there applications for the neighborhood commercial revitalization program? Enough for the 800,000 or no?
No, there's, there'll have to be further conversation, I believe, in one of the wards that might have a little extra money that needs to be looked at. Not, it's not extra as far, it's the original 200,000 per ward that was not fully allocated, did not have enough projects that submitted.
Yeah, I held, I held some, I only had two projects, so I held some back in Ward 4, but we have another year to allocate it.
We can do another cycle, is what we. We can do another cycle is what we were talking about yesterday.
So, so just in summary, green checkmark, it's been obligated and we cannot reallocate those dollars, right? I mean, if, let's just say that.
That's correct.
They're gone.
Yep.
The, the one public schools preschool programs, those dollars are gone.
Yep.
And, and, and if they can't get, I can't remember, I'll say it was six additional rooms.
Yeah, there, there are some clawback provisions and a couple of the agreements like that one, that if they're not performing, the funds could be returned.
Returned to the city and, and they could be dispersed elsewhere.
Correct. But we need to treat it like it's already been obligated and, and spent. And then only if they don't perform, would the claw, the clawback.
So we'll look at that at the end of this year, right?
At the end, or after the school year begins this fall, we will look to make sure that they've.
Okay. December of 23, we can look at some of those programs.
That's, that's probably, yeah, quite a bit. It's probably like with any of these agreements.
I would think that we should look at all of them and at the end of this year, if that's a.
Again, they're constantly being looked at.
Yeah, I mean.
And we plan.
For us, as a council, we need to.
Yes.
See where everybody is and.
So, so do those, so do those programs that are already received the dollars or about to, do they have to file a report then that, yeah, we spent the dollars?
Yes. So we have to report quarterly on all the sub recipients and, and making sure that that continues to be compliant.
Okay.
What's the one at the bottom, the general fund support in yellow?
Right. So, so that was.
What is that?
Yes.
So, yeah. So you had seen that on the, it was included in the blue letter for the set hearing on the budget and then also the blue letter that you'll see for the actual hold hearings on next Monday. That was dealing with the Senate File 181 and the operational loss that we have in, in fiscal year 24. So all that is, is we, that's yellow because that wouldn't be officially committed because we have to reallocate and commit it at that budget during the budget process. So.
So can we just like the storm water? Can we just kind of, the storm water, we have 2 million still left. Are we, do we have other projects for that 2 million?
Yeah. So with that one specifically, we have, I think, a million for the transload expansion, and then another million for University Avenue in Closest Creek.
Okay.
It's just those agreements have not been completed as of, as of March 31st.
But I, in the 5 billion for the airport, I thought we'd already allocated that and gave that to them as the work that they're doing now. Is that not what we're doing?
We, we do, we do not have an agreement with them to actually get the money out. So we have not gave them money yet.
Who, what agreement through the board, through the airport authority? We need an agreement with them?
Yes.
Where's that at?
I can check on the status of that. That one, I'm not familiar with. It's not slowing anything down though out there. We've been in constant communications with them. And we want to make sure that they're getting to that point where they've got full funding as well. So.
So are we looking at Cure Violence, the 600, or is that fully allocated? Are we looking at that annually through the violence prevention? Is that what we're doing with the 300 and 300? That's for the next two years? Is that, is that why we're looking at that?
Yeah, we split that up so, so we could see how the performance went the first year.
Okay.
Yep.
Can we submit this report to the federal government on a quarterly basis?
We submit, we submit a report, not that this is kind of a, a, one that we created for, for councils use because we have to also, they aren't worried about the allocation point where, that you guys have done. They more are on the worried about the obligation and expended side.
Yeah.
So we have to go through it a little bit differently. But yes, the US Treasury has a, has a system that we have to go into.
Right. What, what I was going to ask is if we're already compiling a similar report on a quarterly basis, I assume that we can get this report on a quarterly basis going forward?
That's the intent.
Yep.
Yep.
So can we just kind of go through it briefly, like the literacy for childcare? We allocated a million, they've only used 100,000. So is that something that, are they going to be able to use the?
So this.
The million dollars?
Yeah. The, the literacy for the public libraries, that 100,000 was the vehicles that we did for that outreach.
Yeah.
The other 900,000 is the operational piece that will be approved each year of, of the budget.
And that is staffing that they're, they're going through HR right now.
So, so when it's an internal use, it, it has to be handled a little bit different. It's not actually an agreement. So it's going to be through the budget process.
So that one specifically staffing, so when that is gone, we're not going to be responsible for the additional staffing. Are they coming back to us in 2025 when this is in 2026 and say, you funded this through the ARPA funds, we have this program and now we'd like for you to.
This.
Continue to fund it. Is that what's going to happen with this?
That is very likely what it will happen because that was the one exception that we had with one-time funds for which we were putting into an operations ongoing.
So, and how much is that annually then?
300,000, about 300,000.
About 300,000, yeah.
So that will go into the library's budget? We're going to increase their budget 300,000?
From general fund, it, it was increased with this funding in this cycle, but it will need to be replaced with general fund. I think it would be fiscal year 26 then because this will only cover.
Yeah, this is the 24, 25 and 26. So.
It'll be 27.
Yeah, 27 will be the first year.
Okay. Can you, can you like scroll up a little bit? I can't see the yellow. So the, the other way. So we can just kind of go through the yellows. What was Parks, I think Parks was the next one.
Yep. Those are as the different projects come.
Okay.
Up and go through.
Trails and sidewalks, the, the solar panels. So we have 800,000. What, what is that, what is that going to be used for?
At this point, we're still looking at solar panels. So we'll get a final answer on the location at Southeast 15. And then we'll come back to council on what other solar panel projects could be utilized.
So we've already, but we already fully funded that one.
We know we've got more than enough with this funding.
Because we had a change order for that one.
Yep. And it came in under this. So we want.
So we still have an additional 800 that could be used for something other similar?
Potentially. We'd like to get into the construction period to make sure there aren't change orders or anything of that nature.
So we'll look at that at the end of the year.
Yeah, I'd say partway through the construction season, we'll be able to.
And just a point of clarification, we're allocating that, but we should, because the Inflation Reduction Act passed, we now qualify for rebated tax credit on that solar project too. So we, we'll be getting additional dollars back from that investment, right?
That is correct.
That's not accounted for in that 3 million. We, we'll, we'll be getting maybe 800,000 or so back.
That's correct.
And, and those dollars that we get back, we would put in that energy conservation CIP fund, those, those type of dollars.
For similar projects in the future.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you know, one of the things that would be great about expanding the solar panels, I mean, it's not just consistent with our climate policy, but when we do this in our buildings, we're going to be saving operational costs going forward as well, which takes dollars out of the general fund or saves dollars in the general fund in the future, which, which adds additional value and solves some of these other, other issues where we know things are going to be tight. So.
The, the tree program, and they're able to actually.
They're working on the agreement right now.
Plant that many trees?
Yeah. So that's currently, I think, targeted for the second meeting in April.
Yes.
So, second meeting in April. I think they're working through that agreement right now between Trees Forever and, and our legal staff and, and Public Works.
Right. So our urban tree canopy goal is 3,800 trees a year. So I don't know how close we're going to get to that, but that's the goal set out on our.
Is that two and a half million dollars for the trees?
I believe that would be even higher yet.
Yeah.
I don't know that we're going to.
We're, we're going to be at like a quarter of our goal, right?
Uh, I, I actually, I think it was a little better than a quarter, but not, it might have been a third.
Okay. But they're able to actually put trees in the ground. Like that's a lot of trees. And when they have a lot, they have the wherewithal to be able to do that.
Right. Which is no small task. That is a Herculean.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Yes.
Because that is an incredible amount of money in trees to put in the next two years, spent in the ground. Well, it's two or three years we have to have it done by. Three years?
26.
26. So it's.
And I would have to check on whether this contract is a two-year contract or, because I, I don't know that it's three years. I think, I think we're trying to do that too.
Okay. The, the, the Dico site, I mean, is that just the, the cleanup of it or is that the, is that the?
This is actually the Global Plaza for festival event space that would be on the exterior of the stadium. This would be an opportunity to move some of our other street closure events to this new location.
Okay. And then just refresh my memory, and I know that we haven't had a whole lot of discussion, but tell me, so we're doing 1.5 for the Global Plaza and then how much is our ask for for the entire soccer stadium?
Yeah. So we're still working through that with our partners, the county and the, and the private side as well. Our focus on the city's contribution has been on the environmental mitigation that needs to take place.
Right.
And the numbers, the number's north of 15 million right now. And so we're trying to understand from the engineers just exactly how some of that work can be done more efficiently. Because that's a big number, obviously.
And what's entailed in the 15 million?
Uh, right now, that would be clearing the remaining foundations and concrete work that's out there and then replacing the cap, which I believe is being proposed as a clay cap at this point in time. So that's the science that we're, we're looking at. And then any.
The city owns the site now.
Correct. Any penetrations through the cap for foundations of a building or things of that nature would have special procedures that would be costly as well. So that's how we get up to the 15 million.
And it's our responsibility? We're responsible for 15 million?
Well, that, that has been the discussion because if we're not, then the project doesn't move forward. We'd have to do something completely different with that site.
We have to do some work on that site to make it usable for.
Anything, even just green space.
Even just green space. Okay.
And there's a requirement to clean it up.
Right.
Part of our agreement.
Was that we would clean.
With the feds.
And did we get federal dollars to do any of that?
Yeah, no, because what we did is we parsed out the work. They did some of the work. We've done some of the work and they still have yet to replace some of the equipment that's monitoring, the environment is right now. But they've already taken care of the buildings they needed to remove. And so I, I would categorize it as most of the federal work has already been completed. The exception being this monitoring equipment. And they are working on the pond as well on the south.
So what, there were five buildings?
It's done now. It's just been completed as well.
There were five buildings?
Five major buildings.
And they had to remove.
Did they have three or did we have three? They had, they had three and we had two.
That's what I thought. And their work is done.
On the, the building aspect.
Including the foundations?
Uh, I believe those are on us. The, what's?
Part of the cap.
They already been capped, that part. Sorry. Now you're a little too deep for me to be.
Why, something we probably need to touch on here.
Yeah, it's not, no, this is a good opportunity.
We'll just need to know what additional obligation we have to clean that up with the feds.
Pam Cooksey, Assistant City Manager. The buildings have been removed. The ones by EPA had the chemical, I can't remember what the name of it was, that the EPA was responsible for. We had the choice of whether we wanted to demo the other two buildings. We chose to demo them because the site, I mean, they weren't usable. So the foundations and slabs are all left in place because that's part of the cap for the site.
Right. So they're already there?
They're still there, yes.
And we're leaving them there?
We're leaving them there. They can be removed, but they have to, another cap has to be put in there.
So that would be part of the construction of the, of the stadium?
Right. When you redo the site, you can redo the cap.
Or whatever else goes in.
Right.
Or whatever else is developed there, yes.
But right now, we're not, we don't have to change that cap since it's there.
No, we have to maintain that cap. I mean, it's really.
That's not 15 million dollars then. Where's the 15 million that you get it?
Yeah. Let, let me be clear here. That, that space is not usable as a public space as is today because.
To modify it for other uses, you need to do something different.
Yeah. So it's not a green space. It's concrete and foundations.
Concrete and asphalt on the rest of the area.
But whoever decides to do something there is required, build a new cap. Right now, it can be left alone. The cap is there.
They can use what's there or modify what's there, or they can replace what's there. I mean, it's.
Okay.
However, they want to figure that out.
But we don't have to go in there unless we're going to use it for something that other.
Right. We just need to maintain the cap.
Right.
So that we can contain the contamination.
Decide what exactly is going to go there.
We want, we want the land. EPA had.
Partner with whoever's going to use it productively.
EPA, Scott was describing is responsible for replacing the groundwater system. And that's been on hold until we figure out how the site's going to develop. So we make sure that the wells or anything that's being placed doesn't have to be moved or modified going forward. At some point, we may get to the point where we want that system placed now rather than later, just because of the condition of the existing system.
But isn't that with the federal?
Yeah, the EPA is obligated to do that.
Doing that.
Yep. According to our consent decree, EPA is obligated to do that. Yes.
So we're not obligated to do anything else?
Maintain the site.
Maintain the site.
Do all the monthly monitoring, the monthly testing, all the reporting, keep the permit current, those type of things.
Partner that's willing to partner with us and do what they, whatever they're, we're going to decide to put there, whether that's a soccer stadium, whether that's some other public function, that's.
Our obligation is to maintain and report. Yep.
Okay. But right now, we're fine and we're not.
We're in full compliance.
Because I, I heard that we have to spend 15 million, but that is not necessary.
To develop the site, some money will have to be spent.
Okay. But that's two different things. We don't have to do anything until we find out what the site's going to be and who's going to partner with us.
We have to maintain and report.
Yeah. So we're not forced to spend 15 million immediately.
That's not in the EPA agreement, no.
All right. Because that's kind of how it was presented before you stepped up here. So thank you.
Thanks for clarifying that, Pam.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Thanks, Pam.
Is it my turn?
Yep, if you want to turn.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So when I met with Kraus team sometime before Christmas, I think, they were waiting to get a response from the EPA regarding a retention basin. And I thought they were going to hear something in February. Do you, does anyone have the outcome of what they were waiting to hear about? So that removed, that impacts, if they created a retention basin, could they use that dirt elsewhere for their cap? And.
Uh, that was a positive response, as I understood, but we, we can get confirmation from them.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah.
So does that mean that something, we're getting closer to some sort of agreement or what is that? Learning that. Yeah, thanks, Pam.
We have bi-weekly calls with EPA and Kraus. Kraus keeps asking questions. EPA keeps responding. I think what you're referring to is soil that was contaminated with pesticides and they're allowed to leave that on site. But it, there's been a series of questions and what ifs, and can we do this or that? So there, there's been a lot of back and forth and the EPA has been very patient and taken a lot of time and hired a consultant to help work through the process. So EPA has been very cooperative on this, kind of gone more than we ever expected.
Any other questions?
Can we keep going through the list?
The yellow sheet.
The yellow, if you don't, is that okay with you? The, like the Blitz on Blight? I mean, so are we, are we going to be able to get through the rest of it, the, the money that's already in there?
Yes. So the Blitz on Blight, this was intentional for commercial. And so we are looking at, and I'm going to look out the staff to make sure I don't mess this up. Uh, Fort Des Moines, uh, was going to receive some of those funds, and then, um, we had already put 500,000 into the Sixth Avenue, uh, NDC project, uh, at the Riverview.
I think that's going to be part of the remaining, I think.
Oh, okay, and then, um, there is, uh, further north on Sixth and Euclid, uh, the project, uh, jointly being done with InvestDSM, uh, to assist with some of the demo costs in that location. Yeah, there might be just a little bit left over at that point, so we need to get those numbers from those organizations to understand exactly what those costs are. Um, and we're close on all of them. Um, so those should be easy, or those, those should be known quantities, uh, this summer yet.
So the 3 million for rehab of affordable housing, do we have applications for all of that?
So that is an easier answer, because the intent is to put that into ION.
Okay.
They had over 200 applicants.
Yep.
Yep, so that's, so we'll definitely be able to use all of that up.
Definitely.
Absolutely.
The one that you'll notice, uh, that is in gray is, is the, uh, 1.5 million for retention of existing affordable housing. We have two options there that we're looking at, uh, working with landlords with the potential to extend uh, affordability periods for, that might be expiring. Um, so we've had some conversations with, with landlords that are in that situation. But then we also are having conversations about a land trust opportunity. Uh, that's a really fabulous idea to, to be able to, uh, work with real estate in having uh, perpetual properties that are available for, uh, households, uh, of need and lower income. And it's a complex system. You may recall that Amos has been helping us by bringing speakers in, uh, and becoming educated on this. It's something that frankly, uh, across the country, they, is done quite a bit, but there's very little of it in Iowa. And so we're, we're trying to understand it better and seeing what, what we can do there. So we've got time, the next four, four to six months, to explore that further. If, if the land trust idea becomes too complex or not available in the timeline, we can back up and go with the landlords in extending their because we have options.
I, I mean, I like the fact that we're exploring that idea. I think it, I mean, I, I'm interested in learning more, and I, I'm appreciative that we're we're looking into that.
So I would take the, the 5 million is for the nationwide, is that correct? The aging modernization of city facilities?
Being considered that way.
Is that where we've got that set aside for?
I, I would tell you that's, the decision's not been made, but that's, would be my recommendation, and so we'll, we'll be looking at something again this summer, uh, to make that proposal and recommendation to you.
But it's still an additional, I mean, what are we, what are we looking at to redo that?
Uh, that discussion will be in early May.
Sometime in May, yeah.
Because they're doing that analysis right now, but it's big numbers, admittedly. It will be a big number. What does that leave, um, Nick down below yet?
Nothing, it's just the
Okay.
The 3 million, the Bravo, what we already talked about.
So, uh, the only other thing I was going to say as well is the total allocation that council did was at 49, 860. Um, the amount of ARPA that we actually received is, uh, 94, 824. So we are technically over allocated, so what we're doing is we're watching those amounts, uh, to make sure we don't go over the true dollar amount that we received, but we wanted to for rounding basis. We, we thought it was best to do what we did, so.
I, I don't see where you're talking about the 49.
He means the 94, 860.
Yep, the total is technically about 35,000 more than what we actually received from the, from federal government. So instead of trying to go exactly to the dollar, we allocated a little bit more, assuming that some of them would be a little bit less as well, so. We only, we only over allocated by 30, 35,000.
Okay.
So we can't, we can't fully spend all of these, or we would have to come up with, uh, some additional funding of 35,000 to cover.
All right. Thank you. That was helpful.
All right. Mr. Manager, anything on that, else on that subject?
No, I, we wanted to have a scorecard, if you will, a status of, of these reports, so that we can update this quarterly. I would strongly encourage you to bring it up with your Assistant City Manager conversations as well, if you've got questions. And I just want to reiterate, it is a, uh, much appreciated opportunity, right, for our community to have these funds available, and thank again um, the feds for understanding this importance. So
A huge difference for our city.
All right, we'll move on to the Public Works Equity project.
Jonathan, it's all you.
That's not the right slide. Morning, Mayor, members of council, Jonathan Gano, Public Works Director. Uh, before I begin on the, uh, the regularly scheduled show here, I just wanted to catch you up with some real quick info on your ARPA and trees questions. It will deliver about, just north of 6,000 trees. Uh, it is over a three-year performance period. They have until the end of 2026 to get those in the ground. Uh, they're contractually obligated to 500, you know, north of 500 trees um, in a given year under the, the pre-existing contract, uh, so we would supplement that with at least 2,000 more. Uh, get very close. They've been doing far more than the 500, um, but I imagine that the 2,000, uh, with ARPA funding will will take quite a bit of that, kind of what, what we consider the extra trees in a year. Uh, the Trees Forever program has been very successful in fundraising, uh, and supplementing the city's tree planting budget with philanthropic dollars, which is, uh, you know, the beneficial outcome of the, the, uh, at least one beneficial outcome of it. We'll talk a bit more about some of the other ones there, but uh, we'll get very close, uh, we're a lot closer to the 3,800 trees than we would have otherwise, uh, and get, get, try to get as close as we came to 3,800, uh, definitely during the three-year performance period, uh, of the, the ARPA-funded work. Uh, next, I wanted to talk about equity in Public Works, that, uh, as was requested. Um, the, uh, the definition and the way we think about equity, uh, in Public Works is, uh, there's, there's a lot of different ways that ones does it. We have, uh, the, the, the council adopted equity lens from, uh, from 2020. The city, uh, stood up an equitable service team in 2018. The Public Works Department has been participating in that. Uh, the, the Public Works Department has been invited by industry partners to participate in, uh, in, in, uh, equity-focused workshops to better understand our impact on disadvantaged communities. Uh, and the, the one kind of recurring, easy-to-understand way that I use this to communicate to, to the, the concept to my colleagues inside the department is the difference between equity and equality is illustrated with a simple cartoon, that equality is treating everybody exactly the same. In this simple illustration, everyone gets issued one box to peek over the fence, uh, whereas equity is, everyone is given what they need to achieve the same outcome. Uh, and we, we do use both kind of, of, of approaches to solving different problems in, uh, service delivery, infrastructure development, and, uh, or service offerings to our residents. And I'll walk through, most of them have an equity consideration placed at the front end, but there are a few that are uh, strictly delivered, uh, on an equality basis instead, and I'll kind of walk through those there. Uh, this is a learning process for, for, both for me personally and for our team members in the Public Works Department. Uh, we've evolved several things over the course of the, the life of the Equitable Services Team. Um, sorry to see Manisha leaving, uh, she's been a valuable, valuable, uh, um, you know, a valuable member of the, the, and leader of the service, Equitable Services Team, and, and great at asking tough questions that get us thinking about different things. Uh, and we have even, by way of example, recent policy changes to city ordinance. And I'll, I'll point out what those are, that are, that are driven by equity, uh, equity considerations that have come up recently. Not a whole lot of what we think about in Public Works changes very quickly, but, uh, there's still opportunity to adjust our operations, our service offerings, uh, to, to, uh, to better serve our, our, our public with a, an equity lens looking at things. So so as I said, we're, we're, we're looking at our totality of service offerings and infrastructure development, uh, through those. I want to first walk through those decisions that are driven primarily by equity concerns. Uh, so we do offer special collection services for weekly, uh, recycling, garbage and yard waste collection for the elderly and firm. We have about 1,000 residents, uh, of our 68,000 stops on a weekly basis, where the, uh, the collector will step out of the, the truck, go to the house, bring the cart to the curb for the resident before it is dumped, and they'll deliver it back. Uh, and the signup process for that will also involve the personal delivery of the documents that need to be uh, certified by one's physician to do that. So we try to keep that barrier to entry very low, so that everyone that needs it can easily obtain that, rather than just throwing a form on the website, because not everybody that needs these services is well-versed in, in, uh, in websites and those kinds of things. Uh, so we try to make it as easy as possible to, uh, to, to recruit people into the service if they need it and can justify.
I just asked real quick, how are you, how do you get that message out? Do you go like to senior centers and talk to the people there, or outreach?
We're not advertising it per se. It is on the city's website as a, as a, as an offering. Um, it, and those, you know, service providers that, that work in that field are aware of it.
All those people are, okay.
It's not a secret, uh, but we don't, it's not on billboards.
But you don't mind if we go?
No, 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 it's, uh, it's, it's an open door, that everyone that is qualified for it is, is, uh, is eligible, and, uh, we, we, as I said, try to keep that barrier to entry pretty low. Yep, uh, they can call our customer service center. One call initiates, uh, a visit from the, 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 uh, the section chief for that neighborhood, uh, and can hand-deliver forms. They can also be downloaded off the website if they, if they've got, you know, printer capabilities at home, or, uh, or, or know someone that can. But yeah, yeah, uh, there's no, there's no compunction against advertising. We just don't push it out in, in, in city source or other, other ways. Um, another one, and this was one of those recent changes, uh, that we subsidized the monthly service charge for low-income seniors. Uh, and this was, I want to say about a year ago. Uh, another change to Iowa state code prompted me to go reading through, uh, the, the, what those changes were and, and, and then comparing that to our city code. We've long had a subsidy for low-income seniors that are also participating in the, uh, property tax, uh, rebates, but we did not have a, uh, a discount subsidy for renters who are also participating in another form of that same property tax rebate. It takes different form authorized by another, another chapter or another section in the same chapter. Uh, and we remedied that inequity that we were subsidizing for several years. We were only subsidizing homeowners and not low-income seniors that were renters, even though they were both accessing the same, through parallel paths, they were accessing the same thing. Uh, that's one of the things that the, uh, the Equitable Services Team has coached us to look for, and we found one and, uh, closed a loophole uh, a year or two ago, uh, so that everyone that is qualified for the state relief on property taxes, whether homeowner or renter, is, uh, uh, eligible for the same subsidy on there.
State, state relief?
I, I don't recall. It's, uh, it's income, uh, size of family and income, uh, means tested. And I, I think the change was it lowered the age, uh, at which one could qualify. That was the most recent change. To encourage retirees to remain in Iowa, uh, to rebate them back some, or, you know, some healthy percentage of their property taxes, and will reduce their
And that, and that's something that to be aware of, that life, that's automatic.
Right, right, and, and we require them to have already participated in the, the property tax, uh, you know, make application to and, and receive the property tax certification, you know, that they're eligible to participate, and then we will subsidize their solid waste collection.
How many people participated, or how many households?
I'm not sure. I'd have to look that up. But we can find out.
Can you email us that?
Yeah.
And like where it, how it increased with the renters when you added that in there?
Yeah.
It'd be nice to know what is, yeah, how it done.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can
Benchmark where we started and where we're at.
We can track that down. Uh, another equity piece in our, uh, this has been a couple of years, but we have a multilingual call center. Uh, currently two languages. We used to have a third, uh, on staff, um, and, uh, then every one of the, the call center, uh, call takers has, uh, a translation service available. Um, the, the longest telephone call in the, the translation services pantheon was someone that, uh, took 22 minutes in Japanese to sort out what their issue was, uh, but we were able to service a, a customer in the language of their choice by using an interpreter service. Uh, we do maintain on-staff, um, during regular working hours, uh, both English and Spanish, the most commonly spoken languages. Um, and the, uh, the French was, was, that, that person's no longer here, but that was helpful to uh, African immigrants, because French is a commonly spoken, uh, additional language for, uh, immigrants from subsaharan Africa. Uh, it, it may not seem like it, but a, uh, unitary charge for garbage and recycling lowers the barrier for all residents to participate in recycling, so we don't, uh, we don't have the same model as is common elsewhere, where it's, it's fee for service. If you want to recycle, you subscribe and you pay an extra fee. Uh, we have one charge to encourage as many homes, uh, to recycle as possible. It's opt-in, so everyone, every new, uh, every new homeowner is, or when they sign up for services, deliver both garbage and recycling. Uh, and that lowers the barrier to entry for it. We, we do struggle with contamination, that we work on the backend to correct through training and education and spot checks. Uh, but, but from an equity perspective, we have no barrier to entry for anybody, uh, to participate in our recycling program. Uh, I mentioned the, the Growing Futures program as the, the primary planting mechanism. Uh, that is a tremendous, uh, win-win-win situation for, uh, for equity in our, uh, urban canopy, because we are hiring students from disadvantaged neighborhoods to plant trees in those disadvantaged neighborhoods with the planting program organized around the, uh, the historically, uh, underplanted and disadvantaged neighborhoods that were the formerly redlined, uh, areas, uh, have less tree canopy in them, so we're hiring, uh, young people, training them and educating them in, uh, in, in, uh, green futures, uh, green careers, and pointing them towards, uh, to, towards those kinds of, of employment opportunities later. They get important connections with, uh, the tree care industry. Uh, we've successfully graduated one onto the forestry program at Iowa State as a future and ongoing member of the, of the green industry. Uh, in the meantime, we're giving them job skills. Uh, part of the training program is how to write a resume, how to do a job interview, how to get a bank account, so they're teaching 16-year-olds how to go into a bank, uh, you know, kind of holding their hand through that process, and getting them started with basic financial literacy, and, uh, you know, putting money into their pockets that they can then use, uh, as, as teenagers, uh, while also planting our future tree canopy in places where the collective we have historically under-resourced that kind of effort. Uh, pavement management project selection is an equity-focused kind of, of, uh, infrastructure, uh, planning tool, because uh, funding comes from the state for road use tax on a per capita basis, so, you know, road-wise, everyone is, uh, uh, everyone is funded the same. Every head in, uh, in Des Moines is worth the same amount in road use tax. But we steer that to where it's needed. As I mentioned at the, uh, November pavement management briefing, we use, uh, uh, pavement management software to send the, the resources to where it's needed most. So this is a case where need is defined in infrastructure condition rather than socioeconomic status, but it's still kind of using equity rather than equality. Uh, we did break the, a strictly equal funding formula, uh, five, six, seven years ago, where, where 25% of those dollars went to every single ward equally, but our infrastructure is not distributed equally. So we were, uh, through, by taking an equality approach to infrastructure funding, handicapping wards that had more, uh, centerline miles of roadway than other wards, uh, less densely populated wards had, had the, uh, the, the corresponding benefit of, of getting wards had the corresponding benefit of getting less dollars to maintain more roadway. And that didn't, that's not an equitable approach. So, we've switched that to an equitable one where the need defines where the resources go. But the need is defined in infrastructure condition rather than people. The stormwater rate is another equity, another equitable consideration baked into our ordinances because of there's three tiers for, for single-family residences. And it's based on, roughly speaking, on roof size and impervious area. So, in a neighborhood with less affluent homes, you will find smaller roof sizes, less impervious parking. So, they then pay a corresponding lower rate. So, there's one-half, 1.0, and 1.5. So, the larger ones home gets, up to a certain point, the higher a rate goes. And we do charge the actual square footage of impervious area for all multifamily and commercial residences or commercial structures, including nonprofit and governmental and other things. So, our largest stormwater customer, if you want to think in terms of that, is the Des Moines Airport, which has an ocean of concrete out there with runway and generates a lot of the revenue that goes into the stormwater system. So, one equity consideration in our snowplow routing is the inclusion of DART routes into the decision-making process for where does, where do the snowplows go on the priority snow route system. So, we will follow DART when they make changes to their bus routes. The snow routes will follow the bus routes so that our most vulnerable residents that rely on the transportation, on DART and public transportation to get to work can have that same level of service that everyone else does by getting onto the main roads and driving. So, one equity consideration there. This, we'll see that again in the next piece. But the stability of the sanitary sewer customer access fee, it has remained $4.40 per month for the basic sewer customer access service charge for 15 years, maybe longer. That keeps the cost of service low for the, again, aiming at the senior in a small home with a fixed budget. The rest of the sewer revenue is flow-based, so the more times you flush the toilet, take a shower, wash your clothes, those kinds of things, the higher your sewer bill will be. But for, you know, the stereotypical little old lady living in a small house by herself, it's still $4.40 a month and has been for a very long time and will pay a very modest amount based on flow. And we're capturing the revenue for the sewer system on the heaviest users rather than spreading that across everybody equally. So, we try to keep that low so that smaller homes aren't penalized for having small usage. We are benefiting from an equity consideration in the bipartisan infrastructure law. $115 million came to the EPA through that for distribution to the state of Iowa for clean water work. So, wastewater systems across the state are accessing this $115 million. The first wave of that has shown up in debt forgiveness. We're in so far for $1 million of debt forgiveness at the city of Des Moines for a wastewater project, $3 million at the WRA, of which we will benefit from about half on the city of Des Moines sewer bills. And then there's more debt forgiveness to come. We were notified just a week or so ago that more is on the way, but we weren't told how much. The maximum award is $1 million. It's an easy way for the state of Iowa to spend at least half of the, of that $115 million has to go to disadvantaged communities. So, we're, we have priority access to half of that state funding and are, have already seen $4 million of it delivered to the community and more to come. The, a change in 2018 was to adjust the private property protection program, amount up from $1,000 to $1,500. That was in the aftermath of the torrential downpour in the summer of 2018. And we wanted to make this rebate cover the entire amount of the cost of backflow prevention and the sort of the sump pumps and the things that go, the category of improvements that are eligible for that, for that rebate, to encourage its uptake so that you don't have to have skin in the game in order to access this rebate. And we've seen, we saw a very large number of rebates go out in the summer of 2018 and 2019 because of the increase in the size of the rebate, and it now completely covers the cost of it. Stormwater project selection is another case where need drives the project selection. So, we're using equity there. The need in consideration is typically damages and flood experience. So, again, not taking an equality lens to an equity, and the need is not strictly speaking people-focused or socioeconomic, but impacts of our infrastructure on residents. And we're a couple of weeks away from the final, final version of Phase 2 of the Stormwater Master Plan, where we'll be bringing the finished product of a year and a half's worth of work on systematizing stormwater project selection using a risk management framework. Again, need driving the project selection rather than trying to take an equal access to the stormwater projects, letting the needs of the infrastructure drive project selection. So, we do have some decisions that are driven by equality concerns. And one of those is again, back to snowplow routing. We want to, the phrase that I use with my team when talking about equality is that everyone's on a level playing field. And there are many things in our, in our decision-making process that I just walked through where we want to take an equity lens to try to decide how to best apportion our efforts and our services and access to them. But there are some things where we do want to maintain a level playing field. I've got just a couple. It was far easier to think of things where we take an equity lens to how we've decided to do things. But there are some things that, where everyone accesses our services on a level playing field. One of those is not only do we use an equity lens for part of the snowplow routing, but we use an equality lens for part of that because we want no one in the city to be more than four blocks away from a snow route. So, we will move snow routes into neighborhoods to make sure that the longest drive that a resident has to make on any snow-covered road is that slow going to get out of the neighborhood is no more than four blocks. And the most recent change in that was several years ago, but that is a hard rule in it. So, when we adjust the snow routes typically to follow the DART route, that's an annual adjustment. We then go back through the snow route system and make sure that any of those changes didn't upset that equal access to the, to the snow route system, putting someone more than four blocks away. There are just a few homes where four blocks is the magic number for them, and that can seem like a long drive, but it is typically low-volume roads, residential in nature, there's just four of them in a row.
Your team did an amazing job here.
No, thank you.
Probably the first year, nine years, I had least complaint of not getting someone street or not doing it soon enough or not salting when we had different episodes. So, you know, good job to you.
Thank you.
They did fantastic.
I'll pass along your compliment at the flood meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, please do.
If you're not there.
Yeah.
Pothole patching response is something that we aim to get to every single phone call within 24 to 48 hours. During peak pothole season, we stretch that out to five working days. But during the rest of the year, we want to make sure that everyone's phone call is answered and promptly responded to. And really, we take that same kind of approach with all customer service requests. We aim to be immediately responsive to as many people as quickly as possible regardless of where they live or what their address is or what zip code they're calling in from, whether it's picking up trash on the roadside, responding to, to street sweeping requests, pothole patching and all of the, any snow and ice control complaints during the snow season. We get right on it and try to get, solve everyone's problem as quickly as possible so that everyone is accessing our services on an equal footing.
I think your potholes are amazing how, what a great job you do.
I wish there weren't as many. We're working on that.
I turned in one, I think it was Thursday night, and it was fixed yesterday, so Monday.
That's a good turnaround this time.
It was right over a speed hump. So, then if somebody were driving and they hit the pothole and then the speed hump, it was really difficult.
Extra speed humping.
Yeah, yeah. But it's fixed. It was fixed yesterday morning, so.
Good. That's advanced traffic calming there.
Yeah.
Very advanced.
Good job.
Can I just ask, like on East 14th, Southeast 14th, where, what is the, okay, it's a state highway. Who is the ultimate responsible for the potholes on those?
We have a contract with the Iowa DOT to take care of several of their roadways inside the city limits, but not all of them. And Southeast 14th is US 69, and we don't have that under our contract. So, the Iowa DOT is the only agency that can repair that.
That is the one I heard about the other day. So, I just want to make clear so we have the right answer to give.
Yeah, we do pass that on to them and, yeah, they don't want us to touch the, any, you know, main US federal highways or interstate. So, we don't, we don't do on-ramps 235 or the bypass or US 69. So, that's.
Okay, thank you.
About 163, U.S. university?
We do not.
So, that's where, I mean, that was, East 14th was the one I heard about.
Take it back. I think we do. I'd have to double-check. It's all in state route numbers, so I don't.
Yeah, 163.
And so, as long as we're talking about.
I think we pothole patched that.
As long as we're talking about East 14th, Connie mentioned Southeast, but the Northeast section, the portion that Ragby will be coming in on, have you got an answer about the southbound portion of Northeast 14th and will the Iowa DOT be able to help the surface there?
I'm sure they're keenly interested in making sure that the roadway can handle the 10,000 to 50,000 riders that'll be on it.
Thank you.
Might ride with you.
One more equality-based service that we offer is tree planting through tiny trees. That's every resident in Des Moines can access five free trees regardless of their, you know, the size of their yard. Eventually, we can fill up a big yard. I'm running out of planting spaces on my yard. I've got six or, six or eight tiny trees that I've planted over the years. The tallest one's now 15 feet tall. They don't stay tall.
We give away five trees to anybody that wants to plant them in their yard?
Any Des Moines resident can get their tiny tree. I mean, it's baked in the name.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, they're seedlings that we get from the state nursery. They come in, you know, bulk pack, and we break them down with volunteers from Trees Forever and hand out, we've handed out 40,000 trees over. Orders are up to about 6,500 for this year, expecting to get to 7,500 before distribution day.
Of those tiny trees, what would be the survival rate?
At least half. We expect 66 to 75%. My personal survival rate is 75%. I've lost a couple through deer depredation is the biggest, biggest problem. And I've even run over some with the lawnmower, and they came back the next year.
I learned that's why.
I then fenced them off. But they're, they're small, and I was, I was going fast. But they came back the next year. I now have them fenced off, and they're, they're even better for having been run over, ironically.
You've got a couple of new varieties this year. I was reading about the one that's really good for water, you know, if you've got.
Bald cypress.
Yes.
And some of the other ones will fare well in wet spots, low wet spots, too.
I had not seen that before.
Put pecan tree in there that can start producing pecans within six years under the right conditions. A couple evergreens, flowering trees are all native to Iowa. So, increasing the biodiversity of our canopy by giving away free trees. It costs about $15,000 a year to do this, and we've done 40,000 trees so far and another 65 to 75. It is big bang for the buck. Even if we had 99% tree mortality, that 1% that makes it to maturity 20 years from now still costs less than, than the same amount of canopy if we were to buy the larger trees. We do still rely on the larger trees in many of our public spaces because they're not well-suited to, you know, starting with a sapling. But, so to get them in our tougher environments, along road sides and in parks, we have to start with bigger trees. We are taking a novel approach of taking small trees, handing them out to residents to grow in their backyards, and then give them two, three years and put a couple feet on them, and we'll take them back and plant them. That's still in the, in early stages, but we expect to grow several hundred trees that way for the price, princely cost of a dollar per tree and a volunteer donating water and yard space to grow the tree. So, trying to do everything we can to get more canopy out there while we're fighting Emerald Ash Bore, whatever comes next, and just the regular depredation of trees from natural, in a tough urban environment.
Just to revisit the topic of the growing futures kids, I was out planting trees with them this last weekend, and they had 89 applicants for 12 positions.
Yeah, it's a good program.
So, the program is gaining in popularity, so it was a good experience.
It's good they have a deep bench of applicants because they're going to need to stand up another team to digest the armpits.
Yeah, so I think they were going to pass along the applicant's name to other city departments that have summer staffing needs, but anyway.
Good, thank you. And the last piece where I think we'll, we'll offer the conversation where we take an equality lens is that everyone deserves flood protection. So, the, you know, 100 million more that we're investing in our levees does not care about who's behind it. It's just if the land behind there has people and, and infrastructure and buildings that we wish to protect, it gets protected. So, everyone stands on even footing with flood protection from our rivers and our levee system. Yeah, that gets me to the end of that. Are there any questions? I owe you one file, Joe, I owe you feedback on the seniors accessing the subsidized services.
Along those lines, the senior accessing subsidized, the subsidized rate, is that available on the, online? Like, I went and tried to find it, and I couldn't find it. Like, how do we let them know or are they?
Let me, let me look into that. I'm not sure where we have that, but I'll find out where we've got it.
And how do you define a senior?
The same way the state does. It requires participation in the property tax rebate program and whether property tax rebate to a homeowner or the, some other venue for renters, but residents that participate in that. So, if they're qualified for that, they're qualified for the subsidy.
So, if you're 55, you're a senior or what?
Not sure. I think it's 65.
Thanks for doing the work to look at it through an equity lens. It's interesting the changes you've made, so.
Yeah, it invites us to think about things differently.
Mayor, thank you, Jonathan. While I have the council here, before we leave the topic of equity, I've had quite a few calls the last 24 hours. I'm sure you're well aware of this, that the new valuations have come out for January 1 of '23, and they are significantly higher. We knew that that was going to be the case. But it's actually a moment to stop and fully recognize how that has an effect on an equity standpoint from our residents who may be out there thinking about their first home as a renter today and how much more difficult that's going to be now, knowing that these homes in our community are 20 to 30% higher in value. So, I just, I really wanted to hit home that point that the goalposts are moving away from us. It feels almost like a daily basis when you look at interest rates as well, but I'll be working with staff to see just what more can we do when it comes to affordable housing. And stronger point yet, for those of us that are fortunate to own our own homes, that is building equity. And so, again, the other side of the spectrum, a lot of our families who are renting are losing out on those very same opportunities to build equity from a multi-generational standpoint. So, I just wanted to bring that up as well. And I thought the news that I had heard, and I'm sure there's going to be some other today, Channel 13, I'll do a shout-out, they had it correct. The taxable valuation increases are yet to be determined through the rollback and by state law. state law statewide, they should only be allowed to increase by 3%. So it's a game of averages. Did Des Moines do better than the rest of the state? Yes, I think we probably did as far as the increases. So we won't see 3%, but I would be shocked if our total growth was more than 4%. So just wherever we have the opportunity to talk with groups as you're out in the community, their tax bill and what they have to pay will not be increasing by 20% to 30%. Realistically, it'll be between 3% and 4% if the tax rates stay the same.
I know that Polk County assessors have been going around all the neighborhood meetings to really explain that so people have a better understanding. So I think it's whatever, when we're out and about too, and whatever information we can put on our website too, to let people know. Cause I think they've been talking about this huge increase in assessment. And so you would hear and you're like, well, wait till the rollback, uh, cause I know mine went up substantially, but, and they said that even on, I think on Channel 13, you could go into the assessor page and click and it will give you an estimate of where they think your taxes will be.
That's, that was, to your point, it does, but it's still a significant increase. You know, if you click on that, I mean, there's, you know, when you see a 30% increase to your valuation, I mean, depending on the, you know, if your, if your house is 400 and some thousand and it went up 30%, you're still going to pay an additional $2,000 a year. So with.
No, 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 no.
Oh, that's what it, that's what it says.
Then I need to check their calculations. The way they reported was accurate. If they have a tabulation, let's, let's check that because again, the actual dollars paid should go up between 3% and 4% if the taxing authorities like us keep our tax rates at the same. That's required by state, so that's not rhetoric, so.
We'll take a look back, but I, when I kind of messed around with that assessor's page yesterday, that's not.
Okay, I'll have finance check in. Cause they're, what they, if they're looking at changes to tax dollars, they would have to make assumptions on the tax, taxable rollback. And I would applaud them if they actually were able to, to do that accurately.
It had, it had the rollback on there and, and red and as you click it, it showed, but it says the total amount that you would have to pay for any.
I'll check on it. My guess is they left the rollback the same. That will not happen. The residential rollback will be going down to account for the market values going up so quickly, so. But it's a topic obviously that is fresh, so I just feel free to keep the communication going.
All right. Let's, anybody have any board updates? I just want to let everybody know, I'm proud to tell you all that Greg Edwards came in and taught us up on Catch Des Moines, which was one of my boards. So I appreciate his update on that. Anybody have any specific board updates they want to go through?
I have a couple of things. NFC Neighborhood Finance Corporation has sold their building on Sixth Avenue. So now they're working on bids. They're moving out to 48th and Franklin. So they will be moving into a bigger, more spacious. Botanical Gardens continues to grow. Memberships are up. We're seeing more people are going to the, to the Botanical Gardens and it is a museum. So they belong to the Museums for All programs. So if you have a, a SNAP card or, you know, some sort of a benefit card, you can come and go to the Botanical Garden for absolutely no cost at all. Those are a couple of.
I'll give a couple of quick updates. The Blank Park Zoo, their Wild Lights Program kicked off last.
Friday.
For the public, yeah, for the public on Saturday continuing through May. It's a really great experience and I think they.
Exhibit.
Yeah, it's pretty awesome. They sold 13,500 advance tickets. So they are limiting the number of people for each evening at 2,500 so you don't have to worry about being overcrowded. But I suspect they'll have some good traffic this coming weekend. And from the Arts Festival Board, they've launched creatives breakfast group that they meet once a month to help the members of the creative community about how to be better business people. And so I think they've, they've had three of these now. The first two were 80 plus people. They've had 50 at the most recent one. And their entire staff is going through active shooter training. I guess a lot of organizations, I was unaware that they were doing this, but for outdoor events, the Metro Star team is helping with paid staff and volunteer committees with that training. It's kind of a sad commentary of, of where we are, but so thank you.
I was just going to invest ASM that three of us are on, still continues to have strong outcomes and a lot of involvement and there's a lot of work going on. So, but Amber comes and keeps us updated and I think we talked our last meeting coming within the next few months to give the annual report. So again, seeing strong outcomes in Bravo, we've heard about as far as they had a very strong gala and then the organizations that will be get the funding that we are allocating are for Des Moines youth and specifically art programs that hit the kids of Des Moines.
And also I think just to add on to that, thumbs up to our partnership with Polk County. I think that's been a great.
Bring invest ASM.
To get some, some things done and it has really increased our, our ability to have an impact in these neighborhoods.
Definitely.
So few items, I'll, I'll start. Art Center is welcoming a new executive director. They just went through research. Jeff Fleming has announced his retirement later this spring and Kelly Baum has been announced as the new executive director. So there'll be opportunities to introduce her to Des Moines and, and to get to know her. While we're on executive director search, the DART executive search is ongoing. The position is advertised, resumes are, are coming in and we expect to hopefully go through that process with interviews over the course of the spring and, and hopefully have a new executive director announced in the May-June timeframe. Other DART news is we continue to work on the operation and maintenance facility. So DART will be in a couple of weeks submitting another application for the Bus and Bus Facilities Grant at the federal level. Will be asking for $40 million in the current round of, of funding. Just so folks know for context, we have both, we have a almost 50-year-old existing building that the FDA has said they will no longer participate in federal dollars to repair or maintain that building. That building is in post-inflation dollars, post-COVID dollars, looking at $63 million to maintain and operate that building over the coming years. It would be all, all local property taxpayers and not really meet the facility needs. It was designed, designed, you know, 50 years ago without thinking about some of the modern things that we do, even as simple as bus cleaning or the size of buses. So for example, they do bodywork where they paint the, the DART buses. The buses are too big to fit into the, into the body shop. So what they have to do if they are painting a bus rather than put it in, in the body shop, they have to take the panel pieces off to take it into the paint room to paint it. It's things like that that are just incredibly inefficient. So that next round of funding for the Bus and Bus Facilities Grant will be incredibly important to a go-no-go decision by the, the commission. There's been good support and engagement. Just went on a tour yesterday of the existing operation and maintenance facility with Congressman Nunn's staff. They're, they're hopefully going to be getting a, a letter of support into FDA for us. We've also had other collaborators, the Building Trades has offered a letter of support for, for the project, particularly with the Biden administration criteria. Support from collaborators like the Building Trade is particularly important. It's a project that would, because of the federal dollars, would have prevailing wage and, and so they're, they're invested in that as well. If there is interest and folks want to see the existing operation and maintenance facility, I'm happy to check with DART staff about a tour. It's really an eye-opening piece to just sort of see how, how that facility functions or doesn't and, and what it means for the need to transit. But hopefully we'll have good news. We expect to hear on the Bus and Bus Facilities Grant hopefully by the July timeframe and that will be pretty critical in the, in the commission's decision. And then we obviously heard from Angie on the homeless, the Unsheltered Study, which has been a piece of the Homeless Coordinating Council work. We previously heard on the Future Forward Task Force, which was part of the partnership and Downtown DSM Board. I will say Downtown DSM Board has been doing some work on some of those Skywalker Reimagine pieces. There are a couple of pop-up art installations that, that came about as part of the preparation for the NCAA tournament. Forestry's actually done a, a nice job. They've been adding art installations along the Skywalk over the last few years and this year they, they did what they're calling the, the treasure hunt where, where they have a number of sort of pop-up paintings that are sort of selfie spots. And if you take and submit the pictures, I think they're giving away a, a tree, actually $500, $600 value to get a tree of the maturity that they're giving away. So check that out as well. And there, there will be more, more work to come on that. So.
Want to talk about MPO or?
Sure. Yeah, we can, we can talk a little bit about the MPO. It's, it's, it's been a challenge as we go through the budget of the MPO. MIPA has, has, it's the economic district portion of this board that's been created inside of the MPO that has become very challenging, to say the least. When, when I was the chair, it was brought to me like we were leaving a lot of money on the table as far as grants and things, COVID dollars that weren't out there that if we didn't form this, that we would be able to, we were, we were leaving money on the table. I don't believe that was the case. As of now, Polk County already has pulled out of MIPA. It is a duplicate of our services. Pleasant Hill will be pulling out of MIPA. Altoona will be pulling out of MIPA. I would suggest that, that we do the same as, as it's, I mean, it is a duplicate of our services. We have an economic development team that already does what we need to do. And so I would look to, I would look to some others to, to get their opinions as we go forward. We are paid up until June 30th, so there's no rush in doing anything and we'll, we can sit tight to see if there is any economic value to, to what, what we can get within the net this first year. I don't believe that there is. Other than that, that, that has been the most challenging portion of the MPO because it's so mixed together now between our board and their board and it's been trying to be separated and it's, it's, it's been a challenge. They've, they've hired people under the MPO to work that, that our assessment is paying for a portion of that, but not all of it and it's shared employees and it's.
Messy.
It is very, very messy and it's something that, that we definitely need to, to take a look at. There's a ton of frustration with that. You know, there's multiple RISE grants, RISE grants that, that have been, or build grants that have been put in unfortunately for, for this coming cycle as we need. This is, this is the last, the last one for the Southeast Connector. We're hoping that we'll be successful this time to, to complete that, that road. We think it's very important. It's unfortunate that, that other, others haven't, I mean, I understand the airport, but there's a couple of other road projects that probably could have held off another year, but they've decided not to do that in other communities. And that's part of what the MPO should be working on with these other communities and, and working towards transportation-focused things that I think that we've, we've gone awry and we've, we're getting into other things to where we're not a solid transportation board group. We did a, a brief, I, I think most of us were there for the affidavit that we all talked about, kind of a, what direction do we want the MPO to go? And, and I think it was clear that everyone wanted it transportation-based. I think that was a clear, I'm not sure if staff heard that, but I think it was very clear that the elected, at least the majority of them, want that. I, I know the argument with MIPA was, you know, it's good for the smaller communities. Well, I mean, Pleasant Hill and Altoona are smaller communities and they're definitely pulling out. And, and I see others to do the same, obviously. Real quick, I don't know, Mayor, did you want to talk about water trails? I mean, like just give a brief update or?
Go ahead.
They're working on Scott Street and, you know, they cleared out some trees. So they are doing the stuff that, working on that. The portion of the raccoon, they haven't figured out where their entry point will be. They tell me it is fully funded when they do decide to, to do that. They have, they have the dollars. Pam looks at me and smiles.
Pam's smiling.
I've asked multiple times, but that is, that is something they say they do have. So if, that would be a, a quite of, quite of attraction if, if at least you'd be able to get into the raccoon and come down through the confluence and, and be able to exit it, carry it, at least we would be able to use it. I'm not sure how much use it's going to get without that. So that is going to be crucial that that does get done because the Center Street Dam is going to be years and years away before that would ever happen. I think that's it. WRA. Yeah. And then one more, just with the, with the WRA, I think you'll see it on the, on the council agenda, the Chesterfield area where it was, it was zoned possibly for the WRA to come in and buy a bunch of those homes. They've decided that the expansion North Murray isn't going to happen. So we will be rezoning those homes back to residential.
North Murray.
North Murray, you'll, you'll see some that'll be okay with that. And you'll be some that probably not okay with that because they wanted to get paid and get out of the home. So be prepared that will be coming up. Sorry, go ahead.
I, I was unable to attend the special meeting of the MPO, but probably worth a conversation as a, a council. I think there was some discussion of EPA planning grant. There, there are federal dollars available for climate action planning from the EPA. Iowa is one of only four states that did not submit a letter of intent to participate. What that means is that then certain metro areas are eligible to apply for those dollars. The Des Moines Metro is eligible to apply for those dollars. And my hope is that we as a community figure out how to apply for those dollars, whether that be.
that be Des Moines directly or MPO talk about it. The scope of that work would be a bit broader than just transportation. Obviously, transportation emissions are a major part of a climate action plan, but the scope would need to be broader for something like that. I'm supportive of us figuring out whether we do it through our sustainability office or through the MPO, but doing some of that initial planning and they will, these grants provide dollars for planning staff to plan activities. So it would help us implement what we're working on from a climate action plan, and then that's a first step to be eligible for future implementation dollars. So we're leaving a lot of money on the table for things that we're already talking about doing if we don't either do the planning grant with MPO or internal to the city.
Well, and we we have to think about it deeply because as you point out, the the implementation dollars are far broader than just transportation. And so the opportunity to get some of those billions of dollars as opposed to this $1 million planning grant, we have to figure out how to use it and how to properly be able to access as broad a piece of the implementation.
Right.
Dollars as possible, and we're trying to work with the administration and we're going to be meeting with them actually in Denver to discuss some of those issues and to try to finalize exactly how we should implement our strategy around getting as broad of access as we can. And to your point, it's interesting that we're one of four states in this country that didn't respond, but that's okay. We can get it directly, and I've been pushing for that for a long, long time, and strict funding is always good.
So what is the timeframe that we need to if we're going to do it individually?
April 30th.
Into this.
But we as an individual community can do it.
I would suggest we do that through a sustainability department.
Only the larger communities, I believe, have access to it at this point, so it'd be just a handful and stage, my understanding. It would be a very heavy lift to handle internally, so we will look at that. There was there was encouraging comments at the MPO for the MPO to take the first step, which is the planning money to to do as a region and then with with applications potentially coming individually from communities. So again, it is, as explained, a two-step process. What has to happen first is the planning, which will be greater than transportation. That's that's the.
Is it through the MPO or is it through MIPA?
The discussion was only MPO. It was not through MIPA. And I would add that there there were some ideas on the MIPA front that maybe a different organization might host MIPA to get it out of the MPO. So that's another thought to.
Right.
Consider as well.
But we have to understand the detail of of how the federal government's going to look at it because if they look at the MPO as exclusively a transportation organization, then we may be limited to just transportation dollar application. We need the broader sense.
Sure.
So I just want to make sure that we.
Makes sense.
Keep our feet as wide as possible so that we can step in the right.
Wait.
Direction.
I mean, the the bottom line is let's not lose sight of we've got we've got a deadline by the end of this month to to submit that notice of intent, and I I hope everyone agrees that that could be a priority so that we don't lose out on these dollars. I mean, that's one of the endless frustrations with the state is the state walks away from these dollars that that, you know, there are plenty of other communities in this country that are happy to take up those dollars, but we should we should make sure that Iowa's not only getting its fair share but using it well. I have full confidence that that we could do that.
We can do it for Des Moines. We can't do it for us.
But.
We're we're able to do it for for our region, but we're not do it, we're not able to do it for the state. We can't step in and do things for the state.
But 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 what that means is that that we might be eligible for what would otherwise go to the rest of the state.
Completely understand.
Because we're participating. So we we actually, if by us engaging, we maybe get more dollars than we otherwise would have if it was just a state.
And I'm not disagreeing with you, and I'm not saying not to do it. I'm just saying we're doing it for our region in Des Moines, not for the state. You said the state.
Right, but I I agree with us leading in the region.
It's my understanding, I think, that there's only maybe three or four areas that would even qualify in this state is.
Yes.
Local government authorities who could apply.
Cedar Rapids and Southern Court also.
Maybe Sioux City, I don't know.
Council bless Omaha does well, but that's Nebraska.
Okay. Anything else, anybody?
No. Good job.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Good presentation today, and thank you all the staff that worked hard on it and keep us updated if there are changes. All right, meetings adjourned.